We've got two more for Fridays. Sorry to be taking up the real estate.
I'm kidding you guys. You know how to touch your opponent unless we're bringing it down.
The button down to power it on and then bike up, mic down. Yeah, you just hold it up to your ear. Are you getting anything?
I can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me? Okay, okay. So that one works.
Yeah.
So that one's a good one. I'm not really sure about this one. Let's try this one. Might have to vibe it up. Okay. Check one, two.
Again, now I can hear you.
You can hear it? Okay. All right. So if you want to hand out to this gentleman? Thank you. And Andy, if you want to go ahead real quick, if you want to test it out?
Rachel, this is Rachel.
Okay, you should be good to go. Check one, two. Check one, two. A little staticky. Okay. Mic check, one, two. Okay.
Can I see yours? Whichever. All those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I would now like to have a moment of silence for Eric Mays, the City Council member that passed away this weekend. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I'd make one request that during, oh wait, this is for the special meeting. We'll have another agenda to observe later, right?
No, I'm sorry, Michael.
I was just verifying, are we regular meeting right now or are we special meeting? Regular?
Regular meeting. The calendar stated that today was the regular meeting.
So we basically, we had both topical meetings and subcommittee meetings where we covered a number of items, just to reduce any redundancy related to that. So where, you know, if there's presentations, like let's say, I don't know, priorities, budget-related stuff, you know, that we can reduce redundancy within the meeting because we've covered it now twice. And so to do it third time, I would just ask that. Any opportunity to reduce redundancy would be appreciated, so it can limit the time of the meeting.
Well, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as it stands? We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Nays? The ayes have it. The agenda. Larry, did you have something to say? Okay. Do we have any communication?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two comments that have been submitted.
Thank you. Would you be reading them or were they coming forward?
The first comment's been submitted by Bobby Walton of Davison, and the subject is amending bylaws. "I'm sorry I cannot be with you this evening. I have other business to take care of. However, I do want to make a few comments to let you know I have not forgotten our mutual commitment to keep Mott College the important institution it has been. When I attended the committee meeting to witness work on amendments to your bylaws, I paid close attention to each contribution made by committee members as well as those made by your attorney. College administrative staff and your attorney made very good recommendations to guide you in your work. I thought the effort by Chair Everman to assume administrative authority through bylaws, amendments were well addressed. The conflicts between ambition and state law were obvious. Conflict with standards set by the Higher Learning Commission were also addressed. I would like to see what the Higher Learning Commission's opinions are regarding the board and any approved, any proposed encroachment on administrative authority which has been delegated to President Beverly and her staff. The delegation follows state law and must be observed. I will conclude by reminding you that I frequently told you we expect you to follow laws, rules, regulations, bylaws, and procedures. It is by acknowledging this commitment to accountability we protect our democracy in the public interest." The next comment's been submitted by Sean Murray of Flint, and the subject is civility. "Dear Board of Trustees, this letter is being written as a formal concern and complaint about the civility of the current board and the appointment of the Board of Trustees Attorney William Brickley of Garen LeCaw and Miller. Mott Civility Statement. Mott Community College is committed to the highest standards of academic and ethical integrity, acknowledging that civility and respect for self and others are the foundation of educational excellence. Civil Core Values: Respect, Honesty, Kindness, Caring, Support, Helpfulness, Acceptance, Civility. The Board of Trustees under Andy Everman has not displayed an ounce of civility or respect for the college at large. His behavior of repeated bullying and disrespect towards Dr. Beverly, her position in education, are a gross display of power and lack of integrity, support, and honesty. The leadership of the board is concerning and is lacking. As it relates to the unethical appointment of the law firm Garen LeCaw and Miller, it is baffling as to why they were included in the procurement process and subsequently appointed to represent the board, Mott, and the community. The appointment is curious and concerning. The law firm does not have a background in education or government. William Brickley represents Andy Everman as his personal attorney, which goes against the board's own bylaws. And his career has mostly been spent as a lead trial attorney. This is a display of conflict of interest and does not bode well for the board, college, or community. In addition, it is very concerning that the board has canceled several meetings. As a member of the community, I expect better decision-making, leadership, and civility. The community is watching."
Thank you very much. Does that conclude the comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We now ask the Chief Financial Officer Larry Gothrup for the 20, June 30th, 2023, financial statement auto presentation.
Thank you. We have with us tonight Michelle Fowler. She's the principal with the firm Raymond, and also the manager, Chris D'Agostino. They are here to do a overview of the audit from last fiscal year, June 30th, 2023.
Okay. Okay. Well, good evening. All right.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay? No, you can't hear me?
A little closer to the microphone, please.
A little bit closer. Okay. How about if I bring it down? All right. Okay. So as you indicated, we're here to present the fiscal 2023 audit, and we actually issued the report back in November of 2023, and we did present a detailed presentation to the Finance Committee. That would have happened earlier in November, and now we're here to present to the full board. We do have for you a PowerPoint presentation that just goes through and summarizes the results of the financial statements for the college for the year, but there were just a few comments that I wanted to make prior to that, just so that we can go over the actual results. So I am happy to report that the college did receive an unmodified opinion, or what we would call is a clean opinion, which is the best type of opinion that the college can receive. So that would be for the financial statement audit. And then also, for the summary of the results of the audit, we would have had a separate document that would have been provided to the board for that. And also happy to report that we did not have any audit adjustments that needed to be made as a result of our procedures, and also we did not have any internal control comments regarding financial reporting that needed to be put in writing. And I do want to remind the board how important it is that there weren't any audit adjustments. So that at least tells you throughout the year, since we only come here one time of year, you are relying on that information from the finance office to make whatever decisions you're making. So at least you can have confidence in the information that you're receiving on a monthly basis. And then also, another area where we spend a lot of time is with the single audit. So we are required, based on the number of dollars that the college has, to go through and audit those federal expenditures. And so also happy to report that we did not have any findings. There were actually three major programs that we had to do detailed testing of this year, and that would be internal controls over compliance for each of those programs, and just the compliance requirements for those programs. So we did not have any findings. And just as a contrast to the prior year, the college was only required to have one major program tested last year, and that was the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds, and this year there were actually three that needed to be tested. So any questions on that before we get into this presentation?
Trustees, do you have any questions? See, none. Please proceed.
Okay, all right. So we basically have here, as I mentioned, a summary of the financial position. Now, this is the statement of net position, so this is a snapshot. So this shows you what the college's finances are as of a point in time. So we have this as of June 30, 2023, compared to June 30, 2022. Now, you'll see at the top that we mentioned that it's all funds. And so this is going to mirror what was in your external financial statements. It would have all the funds of the college. And you'll see why I mentioned that, because the next slides are just going to be on the general fund. So you can see here, it's going to summarize the assets that the college has, the liabilities, and the net position. And I really just want to focus on the net position here. So you can see that the unrestricted net position is actually a deficit, but the reason for that is because the college has its share of the pension and the other post-employment benefits for the MIPSers. So for those college employees that are covered, because the college has to take that on its books, that's causing that unrestricted deficit. But I do want to point out, it's good that that deficit did go down during fiscal 2023. And so actually, the net position went up by about $8.7 million. Okay. So next slide. Okay. So this goes through and summarizes the general fund revenues, and this just gives you a nice idea. So you have the pie chart, but then you can also see the numbers below compared to fiscal 2022. But you can see just for the general fund what the sources of those revenues are. So there's the tuition and fees, state appropriations, property taxes, and then the other sources. And you can see it's relatively consistent, the percentages year to year that are making up those total revenues. Okay. So next slide, let's go on to the expenditures. So again, this is just for the general fund or the main operations of the college. And same thing, you can see it summarized what the dollars and the percentages are of the total, as well as compared to fiscal 2022. Again, relatively consistent year to year. So not really any surprises there. Okay. So then our final slide, this is nice to see where you can get an idea of what the general fund net position is over a period of time. So we have it here for fiscal 19 through fiscal 2023, and you can see the $13 million, which is actually good, because if you're looking at what kind of reserves that the college wants to have, two months of general fund expenditures are about $13.5 million. So really, where that balances is about where it would need to be, right, to cover those expenses. And that was all I had, unless anybody had any other questions?
Trustees, do you have any questions? Larry, do you have any comment?
I would. Actually, just thank you, Michelle and Chris, for coming. But Nicole, if you could stand up, please. And I just want to recognize Nicole. She is the one responsible for this audit, her and her team. And year after year, we get unmodified opinions, and the audits aren't in time. And as she said, no findings in internal controls. So that's all to Nicole. So Nicole, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gothrup?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I believe next we have-
I believe next we have the Institutional Advancement Quarterly Report. Dale Wayhill.
Hello, Mr. Chair, trustees. Thank you for having me. This is actually my first quarterly report of the year. Normally, we do these in the fall and then in January, but because of circumstances, you're getting six months' worth of information at this meeting here today. You should have in front of you, as well as on the screen, a copy of this. I'm going to start with the fundraising and grants writing side of the Office of Institutional Advancement. So up top, under "At a Glance," you know that we have strategic funding priorities that we focus on raising funds for. We don't always succeed there. There are some times when funders, grantmakers, and individuals aren't interested in one of the strategic funding priorities that are listed on the bottom left, so we ask them for other things. But I can tell you that there's a fair amount of success. By the way, this report covers July 1st through December 31st of last year, so the first six months of the fiscal year. We did manage to generate almost $19 million under the strategic funding priorities. The bulk of that was in the column of student success and support, where we have the $12.5 million that was the commitment made, the governor signed, from Joint Capital Outlay. The Office of Institutional Advancement can't take credit for the entire 12 and 1/2. We were part of a much broader village or team at the college, which included other members of the executive cabinet, and of course, the president. Several years of requests and lobbying and efforts to make that happen. But it is logged under the strategic funding priority for student success. So $20 million in strategic funding priorities for six months. The all-other giving through the Foundation for Mott Community College. So these are non-contributions, non-strategic funding priority contributions, $441,379.88. And then all the other grants, outside of anything for strategic funding priorities, just over $1 million, $1,035,000. So the grand total that has come through because of the Office of Institutional Advancement and our support for other areas of the college in terms of fundraising and grants, almost $20.5 million. You can look at the individual strategic funding priorities to see, you know, where we're off track, where we're on track. Some of them, we've exceeded the goal. Some, we are significantly behind, but know that we are consistently, continuously working on those with the staff that's in grants and fundraising. And then the highlights over on the right-hand side, we did get a grant, which is called the ADN to BSN Nursing Grant. That's $2 million from the state of Michigan. I mentioned the $12.5 million from Joint Capital Outlay for the Prawl renovation project. There's some information there about Indigenous Peoples' Day that we help celebrate. That comes out of our office, at least the coordination of it. And then the Foundation for Mott College put out their annual report at the end of 2023. And you see the cover there, which has the word Reflections on it. And that's one of our students. She's a dental hygiene student who got scholarships through the Foundation. So I'm going to shift to the marketing half of our report. If you advance the slide to that, should say, marketing and communications. This one, "At a Glance," 25.6 million impressions. That's really everything added together. So it could be billboards, and the estimate of how many eyes are on those billboards at any given location for those six months, the number of radio commercials, and the estimate from those companies on how many people have listened to them, television, print ads, so we were in The View, newspaper, we were in My City Magazine, we've been in The Courier, the Tri-County Times. We also do paid search, so we pay for certain keyword searches in Google, so that our programs pop up when people are looking for training and education programs, especially at local community colleges. We also had paid social media through Snapchat, Instagram, and Facebook. So all of that together produced almost 30 million impressions. The engagements, engagements are when people tag themselves, tag others, share a post, comment on it. That's almost 9,300,000 engagements. Our total number of social followers, this is for LinkedIn, Instagram, Facebook, and X, is 43.5 million. And then the last column is, CIC stands for College Information Center. The College Information Center is the, really the face of the college in terms of incoming phone calls and then live chats. They received, let's see here, it was 21,015 phone calls incoming between July 1 and December 31st of 2023, and they responded to 2,100 live chats. And let me just say, I listened to a call that one of our call specialists took just a week or two ago, and you would not believe the level of service that we give students who present with a problem or an issue. They walk them through this whole thing, and it's back and forth, Q and A, trying to get their problem fully solved, so that they can stay in school or get into this college. Just fantastic work from that group. And then the highlight for marketing, you know that we ended our centennial in September officially with that big event. But in November, we did place the time capsule inside this new stone sign, the large one that's right out here to my right, in that tall column. So we placed the time capsule in there and had an event where we attracted both print and television media to that through the marketing and communications office. Let me say that I've got staff in the audience who I wish to recognize. On the grant side of things, we have our grant manager, Ann Rennie. Ann, if you would stand, give her a round of applause, if you would. We also have, on the fund development side of the house, Lynetta Coney, who is no stranger to anyone in this room, President of the Foundation for MCC. On the marketing and communications side, we have Mr. Bob Campbell. He's the Director of Marketing and Communications. And then lastly, we have Mr. Ken Martin, who is the Director of the College Information Center. It's with their leadership that we make these things happen. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Larry, and Chair, for any questions.
Trustees, do you have any chair questions? Thank you very much. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final special presentation we have this evening is from Information Technology Services, their quarterly report. And that will be provided by Randy Shapple, our Acting Chief Technology Officer.
All right. Hello again. Thank you, Larry. My name is Randy Shapple. I'm the Acting CTO for Mott Community College. And I'm representing the ITS Quarterly Report. And again, similar to what Dale was talking about a little bit ago, this is kind of from last year, so it kind of ends in December. So when you see the numbers and stats, you know what's going on there as well. All right. So if the first slide up there, excellent, thank you. So here you see our ITS services and tickets. These are the calls and emails and walk-ins and all kinds of things we get in ITS that request for assistance. Now, this could be as simple as a password change, or it could be as complicated as this computer is no longer functional, right? We have all kinds of things all over the gambit. Our help desk is our frontline. It takes on these calls. It's able to provide information. And then these are fed to other individuals. Sometimes the help desk resolves them themselves. Sometimes they feed them over to the different areas we have, networking, or to the enterprise team, or whoever it may be. And they go ahead and service these tickets. So you'll see a little bit of the numbers. You can see 400, 600, 700. They kind of vary with the beginning of the semester, and as you kind of carry through the semester, things calm down, right? You will see some stats about the percentages resolved. And I provide that because obviously, we are completing things. But you'll see some things like 90% one month, 99% the next month. We do have carryover tickets, tickets that take a long time to resolve. Sometimes they take weeks. Many of our are resolved in a much quicker timeline, but that's why you'll start seeing some of those things as we go through this as well. So, next slide, please. Talking a bit about some of the ITS projects we have going on, we have the tracking the end-user license agreement. So the college is going through a process where we are tracking all the ULAs, all those contracts that are initialed or approved while going through an installation of a software product. We now, we go through those, we review those. We have an orderly process engaged with purchasing, where they go through those. And so that's a continuing and never-ending cycle is what that's going to really represent, because not only do they go in initially to get approval, we also have to relook at those, because those are living documents for this organization. So those do change over time. Another initiative we have going on is the data retention disposition. The state has us filling out documents about records for the college, and what we need to do and how we handle data that we receive from individuals, just like you might go to any of your other organizations, banks, or things like that. Obviously, our students come to us, our employees have information. All of these things generate, we'll refer to as records. And some of them, we keep for just a few months. Sometimes we keep them for years. Sometimes we keep them for the number of years you're engaged with the college until you leave. But the important thing is, for the most part, all data that we bring in is also going to be destroyed, right? So not everything, there are some things that live on perpetuity, but generally speaking, we do have a cycle that goes through those. And this is a process of defining what that is, and then carrying out and actually disposing of those documents. And that would be both electronic and physical documents. Next slide, please. Thanks. So Enterprise Services, we're looking at the process, what we're working with to look at the data that we have in our systems. This is the warehouse, this is, you'll hear a lot of us kind of retain information. We have to have information to make decisions going forward, in combination with like IR and some other departments on campus as well that use the information. And we have to go through and clean that up and make sure that's correct as we move forward. There's a lot of data, a lot of entries, and a lot of things have to take place to kind of get that going. We're starting the initial planning phases for moving Colleague to SaaS, which is basically a cloud-hosted version of that software. You know, numerous products are run from the college campus. We still do that. We will continue to do that for years, but some things also are now pushed off into the cloud service. This is one of those. Our provider for that product line, Illution, is, you know, mandating is probably a strong word this time, but it's been clear that this is the direction that we're going to go forward as an institution with this product. And as such, we need to review our processes and how they work and how they will function, as they would also need to work inside the cloud. It's a really good exercise, even regardless of going through this, because it's good to know how things work inside your organization. Sometimes we have changeover in staff. We're having more of that now than we've ever had before. And while we may have had somebody for a long time, it helps us with that. As we continue down there, post-secondary articulation agreements and those agreements with those organizations, Canvas ILP, this is just simply a connection between our enterprise system and also the academic systems. Next slide, please. Network Services, we have a continuous camera expansion, as we're doing on campus, and supporting public safety in that process. We've recently, well, recently is in December, I guess, completed things like the KERS-Mott security camera expansion, facilities parking lot, that's actually now complete as well. And we'll soon be starting on the RTC and some other locations at discretion by public safety. We're also looking at some emergency pole replacement that'll probably happen in the spring/summer for one or two of them. We have wireless replacement is now complete. That was a project that's ongoing for years, but there is a tuning. It never ends. It's just something we have to continue to do, and that's something we'll continue to function with. Network switch replacement, this is a very large project for the college. We have seven, over 7,000 devices on our campus, and those all need to be able to communicate together. You'll hear about this a little bit later as well. And as part of that, we do have to replace those devices, and it's a serious project. Emergency power upgrade. So the college campus today, the switches and those devices are powered. We have UPSs that help us deliver power if the power goes out. And we're starting to review, looking at using UPSs and generators in combination to provide emergency power for some locations. Next slide, please. Computing Resources, an inventory of traditional software applications. So, and this is going to be hard to wrap your head around, you know, we think about all these different software packages we have. We have over 1,600 software packages at the college. We have, and I know that sounds astronomical, and it is, let me tell you, for the number of people we have, and what the reality is, is there's very few places that you go that you'll have a dental office, an oil change location. You have, you know, we have an education classrooms. We have all these different services we offer, and you don't typically see all those combined inside the same IT department. So that's something we do, so we have a lot of those packages and applications we have to keep track of, and that's part of that process. And this also goes as far as the cloud-hosted vendors and as well as for there. And we'll go ahead and go into the next slide, if you would. Media Services, we have the PA upgrade. You'll see some more about this later on as well. We have to go through a process of reviewing the PA coverage for the buildings. It's something that our AV services and media services is taking on. And we also have smart teacher classrooms, those rooms where teachers use to teach right on campus, where we have to be able to communicate to our students effectively and with technology and support that are educational environment. And we have numerous of those going on this year. Next slide, please. Security. Well, let's face facts, this is the world we live in, and we're going to need to continue to continue to increase and twist and try to meet the demands and protect our college data. That's our student data, our employee data, from all the different things that are out there. The Internet is a great place, great tool, but also has, opens a pathway, and we have to have those security in place to help to protect the data here at the college. This is, you know, some different things we try to do is break things up. We try to get them into what we call zones. And then what we try to do is prevent information flow from one zone to another zone. It allows us to, if you can kind of think of it, to kind of subdivide our information, things like that of that nature. Cleaning up inactive accounts, this is an ongoing process where, right now, we're, actually, I think it's tomorrow now, we'll be removing students who haven't attended the college in three years. You know, we'll go ahead and clean up those accounts, we'll go ahead and get those cleaned up. And it's a process, and sometimes we're corresponding with students, giving little extensions so they can go ahead and get their stuff off the systems in an orderly fashion. It is a process, and we do our best to work with everybody with that. Next slide, please. And that's the end of it. So is there any, any questions from the Board? Larry?
Trustees, do you have any questions? See, none. You look like you had one more thing you wanted to say?
No, no, I'm sorry. This is my first time, anytime visitor, I wouldn't hear, and first time up here, so thank you.
You did a very good job. Thank you very much. Larry, does that conclude the informational reports?
Mr. Chair, it does.
Thank you. Are there any corrections? Well, first, we have to have the minutes of the meeting of December 21st, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to accept the minutes? It didn't work, but I think you said you made the motion to. Is there a second? Art Reyes made the motion to. And Wendy, we can't hear you either, so.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion has passed to accept the minutes from December 21st, 2023. Meeting of January 30th, 2024. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from that?
I'll make the motion.
Or a motion from Wendy? Do we have a second? Do we have a second from Janet?
Second.
Okay. Any corrections or changes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It has passed. Item 1.74, Treasurers' Report for December 2023. Larry?
So I did go through this in detail in those three meetings. I can give a brief highlight, if you'd like. We can go there, okay. So for December, we had two months that we covered December. The highlights are tuition and fee, revenues are up, enrollments up, our investment accounts are up as well, the MyLAF spending, or excuse me, the MyLAF investment account. Really, no, nothing significant changes in expenditures, other than the UAAL pass-through, which we received more of that than we had anticipated.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept 1.74? Mr. Chair, I move that we receive the December Treasurers' Report. Is there a second? I have a second from Jeff. All those in favor, is there any discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and I think one non-vote. Item 1.75. Treasurers' Report. Item 1.75, Treasurer's Report for January 2024.
Hello? Okay. Again, I did go through in detail on this in the two topical sessions, as well as the Personnel Committee, but same trends. Tuition fees are still up, and then our My Life Investments are also up. We did have an increasing contracted services. We did have some additional professional services in a few areas of the college, so that was the only really significant highlight on the expenditure side.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, no. Would you please?
Make a motion to receive Treasurer's Report for January 2024.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion has passed. Item 1.76, Amendment to the Budget. Larry?
Could you queue up the amended budget? Thank you very much. So as you all know, we're required to, according to Board Policy, do a budget amendment in February. You can see Board Policy 3100. We do the amendment in February, and then again, we'll do the final budget in June, and then initial budget for next year. Next slide, please. So just to recap, a reminder, our funding sources, talk about the three-legged stool. You can see tuition is the largest leg of our stool, and it continues to be there. Next slide, please. Amendments in aggregate, on the revenue side, we saw that tuition and fees, as I alluded to earlier with the Treasurer's Reports, are up $4 million. We had state appropriations up 1.1, but keep in mind, 923,000 of that was our U A A L pass-through, which means that we just turn around, give it right to our Office of Retirement Services, so it's really nothing for us. Grants and other, that's the My Life Investments that are up, 759,000. And then the transfers from future funding, this is actually some good news as well. So we were up tuition and fees, so we transferred the 4 million back to the future funding, and that again with retainage that we've had in past years, a lot to do with the HERF funding that we were able to maintain. Next slide. Expenditures, salaries and fringes are 1.3 million down. Reduction, it's a, the open positions were adjusted. Contracted services, as I mentioned earlier, also, we are up. We do have some temps in our open positions, but also additional professional services and academic student success, workforce development, and IR. Materials and supplies are up as well. We had an $846,000 increase in supplies, and then also bad debts. And as explained at the meetings, anytime that we have, and this is not uncommon to any other college, community college or other, anytime we extend credit, either through us, through a payment plan, or we have federal dollars that we receive, and they have satisfactory academic progress that needs to be completed, if they don't complete, that has to be returned and then put back on the student accounts. And in the past, for the past two years, HERF funding was able to take care of that, so we did not have bad debts. Next slide. So in numerical form, you can see our, the first column is the original budget, the second column is the amended budget. Going down, you can see that we are going to project a 900, just under a million dollar final surplus. And then our net asset percent excluding the U A A L pass-through is 17.4%. So that's within the 10% to 20% of Board Policy. Next slide. Reserve balances, you can see this is just a depiction of our gradual increases to those fund balances, the reserves, the general fund, rainy day fund, maintenance replacement, building in site. Those are Board Policies with each of those. And you can see that we have increased, we're at 14.3 million projected at the end of June of 2024. Rainy Day Fund, 750, and Maintenance Replacement, 3.5 and 3.8 million respectively. Those are set to be, or I should say Board Policy requires, 1% to 3% of depreciated assets, so that changes each year, but we are at the top end of that now. Next slide. Designated balances, student success, professional development, those are set, those were, came to be when Dr. Beverly came, and she wanted to set aside funds for student success and professional development. Student success, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. Professional development was set aside funds for those, especially with those bargaining groups that did not have professional development dollars in their contracts. That is housing HR and allocated through there. Future funding, as I spoke earlier, that is the, a large part of that is the retainage from the HERF dollars that were not spent in past years. So just looking forward, we do have a tuition decision to make in March, a recommendation that will be brought forward in March. Property taxes, actually, they're stabilized, and we're getting inflationary increases. Keep in mind, there is the proposal A, so that gets capped at no more than 5%. And then state appropriations, I say uncertain because we don't know for meat of the year. I believe the governor has recommended 2.5%, but that has to go through both chambers and back to her again, and so we don't know. I think that's it. So take any questions.
Thank you very much, Larry. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to receive item 1.76.
I'll make the motion.
A motion from Wendy. Do we have a second? We have a second from Janet. Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion has passed. Item 1.77. Yes.
Just to go back real quick on item 1.74, just for clarification, did you say there was a one no vote?
No, there was one person that did not appear to vote. It was Mr. Freeman. 1.74. Never heard you say anything into the microphone, so that was our concern. Did you vote? Could you please turn your microphone on? Did you say he voted?
Well, that's what I'm seeking clarification for.
Yeah, we're seeking clarification. We did not hear you vote. Item 1.74.
On 1.74, Michael, he's saying that he didn't hear your vote.
I said yep. Did I say no?
Andy.
Obviously, I said yes.
Did you get it?
I have, that's why I was seeking clarification. If he voted yes, then it would be all members present voted to receive the Treasurer's Report for item 1.74, December 2023.
Go back through the audio and check it. Because Mr. Freeman, did he say that he's said yes?
I can't check the audio right now.
Mr. Freeman said yes, Andy.
Okay, very good. Then we got it. Item 1.77. Larry, would you give an explanation and an overview?
I would be glad to, Mr. Chair. At the February 19th and 20th topical session meetings, and the February 21 Personnel Committee meeting, Attorney Eric McLaughlin, I'm sorry, Eric and Sean, could you come up? I'm so sorry. The gentleman on my right is Eric McLaughlin. He is the attorney from Dickinson Wright. He's a member of the firm. And then Sean Wall is from P F M, and they are the bond consultants. So as I said, at those three meetings, Eric McLaughlin was, explained the bond resolution that you had before you this evening, and Sean Wall, senior advisor from P F M, was there to answer any bond finance-related questions. In their roles, clearly the legal side, there's a tremendous amount of legal things that need to be done with the tax-exempt bond to make sure that all the boxes are checked, the wording is correct, all the filings are done. So that's what Eric does for Sean. And P F M helps with bond structures, defeasance issues, trying to keep the, helping us keep the mileage rate as low as possible on any issues that we have. So in addition to that, myself, Executive Director of Facilities, Rod Whitney, and Acting C T L Randy Chapel presented on the numerous projects identified as needed in the next three years, which is necessitating the bond resolution. If the Board wishes, since all parties who presented are here this evening, it can be presented again, or we can be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Board, do you have any questions? Yes.
Larry, you're saying 35 million is what we're asking for?
Yeah, the 35 million is the recommendation for the projects that we need to do.
Okay. I would like to see that at 40 million, because there's more to do around. I seen a list of the magnets that have to be performed, and since we're going out for the bonds, I'd like to add another 5 million of that so that we can do other projects with that.
May I respond? Okay, so.
I'm just asking.
Right. And so we also have another time allotment that we have to be conscientious of with the bonds. We have to spend those, 85% have to spend in three years. So, yes, I agree with you. There are other things that we need to do, but we've always gone two or three years and identified the projects that we need to do at that time, so that we don't get into an issue of borrowing money and not being able to spend it. So I believe that at a minimum, there's a concept called arbitrage, which means that since they're tax-exempt bonds, we can't borrow money and in fact invest it and get, say, 5.5%, and we're only paying 4.25%. There's a 1.5%, 4.15% spread in that example. That's the earning. So if that happens, we are required then to refund that to the Treasurer, the IRS, Thank you. So yeah, after the calculation's done, then we'd have to refund. And also, there is a, we had this kind of an issue here last time with these because we had COVID, and so there was a lot of construction projects that we couldn't get done, so we had to really hustle to get that, to try to get that spent, and that was only 20 million. So I hear what you're saying, and I agree. So the plan is, and I think I shared this with you before when we met, is that this never ends, right? So the next, have to issue the next series, and then we'll have to go back to the voters for renewal and continue that process, but.
And how long will that be, roughly?
For the renewal process with the taxpayers?
Well, no, for, to go for the next round of.
And I talked to Sean today about that, because he was thinking 24, 26, no, I'm sorry, 26, 28. And I said, probably this is going to be more like '03 and do '27. And then we'd probably spend those, that last 25 million, '27 to '30 or '29, and then we go back to the voters and get new authorization or request new authorization.
So the bonds, the 35 million that you're talking about, that will be set aside especially for the items that you went over with us.
Correct. Now, with one caveat, is that if something happens on this campus that we don't, you know, expect to happen, an emergency-type situation, something breaks or whatever might happen, we very well may have to spend those dollars for that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So, but yes, the plan is, what we shared with you is, those are the projects that we've identified with the help of our architects in 2019. They did the facilities' master plan or assessment of the mechanical systems and the state of the buildings on campus. And that's how we came up with that. And then, of course, you heard the IT side and also the security from Atriad, our consultants.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So just to.
Mr. Freeman.
Just to add to this, too.
Wait till you recognize by the chair.
I've sat through this two times.
Mr. Freeman, you're out of order.
You recognized me. Did, was I not recognized?
I did not recognize you yet, because you had a partial motion. I wanted to see where we were going with that. Did you want to go with the 40 million?
I raised my hand, and you recognized me, so, okay. I guess I can't talk.
Jeff, did you, had said you wanted to do 40 million. Have you changed your mind on that?
Wasn't even a motion.
Well, I would like to do the 40, but as Larry said, that we've got X amount of time to spend it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Takes care of that.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Freeman.
So I've gone through this presentation twice related to the bond financing as well. It needs to be noted that there was a conservative estimation of all the costs related to the work that was going to be done. So it's highly likely that the work will be completed through competitive procurement less than what we had projected. So we may already have a balance of funds that we will then have to program at that point. And I think it should be noted because I work with federal grants all the time, and that while it's great to, you know, everyone assumes, because now I have over a $50 million demolition program, that now, you know, everything's going to come down at once. There's only so much that you can do at a time in sequencing the work, and there was a very extensive laundry list of all the work that needs to be done on the campus. You can only manage so much work at that time to be done. So essentially, we could have an exhaustive laundry list that accounts for all $80 million worth of work, but then also, can you legitimately, even from the contractor base, are enough contractors out there to give you your competitive pricing, and does it make sense? You know, like, we don't do at the land bank 2,000 demolitions at one time because we have all this money. We have to parse out that money and do it so we can actually manage the flow of work that comes through. So I understand completely what you're saying about, you know, wanting to have that $5 million of, you know, wiggle what happens if. But quite honestly, we may already have $5 million or some balance based on the procurement that we do. So I recognize what you're saying. I think it's very valid, but at the same time, too, I think we should really be realistic about what can be done, how much can be done, and so that we effectively do all that work and then can engage what needs to be the next phase of that work moving forward.
Just add one other thing. So in addition to what Michael said, we did go very conservative on the ranges. We took the high end of those ranges. Also, there will be interest, and I'm going to conservatively estimate that we'll receive a million to a million and a half in interest. So we do have that cushion as well. So there is some in there. Yep.
Okay. I, yes, Art. I move we adopt the resolution to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2024.
Support.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Eric.
Item 1.78, the G Card application submission for early head start funding resolution. Is there a motion for item 1.78? Yes, Art? I move we authorize the administration to submit an application to G Card for early head start program funding. Is there a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion has been, any nays? No nays. The motion has passed. Item 1.79, Acceptance of the June 30, 2023 Financial Statement Audit.
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item 1.80, Motion for the Process for Paying Board Attorney Fees.
Yes, I make a motion for a process for paying Board Attorney Fees.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now, there should be some discussion about this, because I don't know what the process yet is. We have to decide the process, so the process could be a number of things. Larry, we're going to ask you for how this is done.
What I can do is share with you how it's been done in the past. The board attorney, we've, and this again is coming from strictly a authorized to pay, right? Just like any other disbursement on the campus. So in the past, it's been a resolution by the board for selecting attorney, and then we receive a rate letter, and then we use that as the amount and, for the charges. The work was authorized and approved by the president because in the past, the president had the same board attorney and they worked in that fashion. Currently, the situation, and why this, I think this is before us now, is that the work that's being requested from your, your, your board attorney is from you guys, the board. And therefore, we just need an approval process, the same approval process of someone is, the body has approved the work and authorized the work, just so that it's been, that we know that it's been, that, that is good to pay, I guess, I'll say it that way. So that's why there's a differentiation from past to present.
Okay. Art and Michael had a question. Please direct your questions to the chair.
What is the motion?
There is, I'm going to go back to that.
No, what, what, can someone please-
The motion was-
I'm asking the question is, what is the motion?
I am going to explain the motion, Mr. Freeman.
Alright, then please do.
The motion that was made by trustee Couch was to pay a process for paying the attorney fees. We currently don't have a process, and it was seconded, so I'm going to ask you, Wendy, to withdraw your second. Okay. Now, Jan, in this, we have to have a process of how we're going to do that. So, Dr. Beverly and I had discussed that the board attorney could submit his bill. She would review it. I would review it. We'd both sign off on it, and then they would be paid. Is that what you would like to do?
You've discussed it with the president already?
Yes, we had discussed it, and she had said she would review it. The attorney would send the bill to the college. She would review it. She would have me review it. We would both sign off on it, and then the attorney would be paid. Now, the amount that they get paid per hour was in the RFP that had been submitted for the billable hours. So when we received that, we knew the billable hours. It was in the presentation. Is that what you'd like to do? Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Point of order. We had a motion and a second. We had discussion. Now, what you have to do is resolve that, like conclude that motion, yea or nay, as stated. What you're talking about is a new motion, which would be made after you've completed the first motion.
First motion, I ask if Wendy would withdraw her second. She did.
I did, but Sue didn't.
So-
So she had no motion on the floor.
She should withdraw her original motion, right? And then a new motion can be created that we can then have discussion and then vote on.
Yeah.
Do you rescind your initial, rescind your initial motion? The initial motion they had was approve the process for paying board attorney fees.
Right.
So you'd like to rescind that?
Yes.
Now for your, you had the next motion. Do you want that to be your next motion where the board attorney submits the bill to the college, to the president? The president reviews it, I review it, we sign off on it, and then pay the attorney? Is that what you'd like for your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Well, can we get the actual language down, or the motion itself?
Okay, how would you like it? Motion to have the board attorney submit their bill.
Yeah, I could state the motion.
Okay, I'm trying to help you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that, uh, that our chair and our president will go over that.
Bill.
Yeah, bill.
Alright, let me see if this is how you wanted it. So I have, you, you motioned to have the chair, president, and board attorney review the attorney fees and to be approved.
Wait, wait, I don't think it was the attorney. It was, was it the chair and the president?
Okay. It's motion to have the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees.
Yeah.
Alright, so trustee Couch motion to have the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees. Currently, there is no second.
Is there a second? We have a second. Discussion. Mr. Freeman.
So, uh, we got some feedback going on. I don't know who's speaker it is. So I've been fairly concerned with the amount of money that the board has been spending lately. It seems like we've, uh, my experience in almost thirteen years is that I haven't seen, you know, like, there've been complaints or suggestions that the, the board should be mindful of that, but I've seen a lot of money being spent, and I'm very interested in kind of having a better understanding of what's being spent, like financial reports related to board and our expenditures, what additional costs that we are incurring. As I looked at some of the recommendations with board policy, I'm really concerned about that, about how much additional money is going out. We should be mindful of that and respectful of it. I would be very interested in having some idea of what's being spent on legal fees and for what reason it's being spent, and that we should all be made aware of. So in here, I don't hear of any controls related to us actually being able to look at what the expenditures were and be able to see, you know, president signs off, board chair may sign off, but that doesn't, you know, I don't know what's being, how money is being spent and for what purpose, and I would like to have more transparency related to that. So, I'm not in support of this motion as presented because it makes no provision for us to actually have reports, like even quarterly reports to the board of, you know, how much are we spending on legal fees and why are we spending that? I just, I wanna know that, and I think it's fair that we should expect that.
Thank you very much. Art, I saw your hand up. Do you have a question?
Yes. The motion as read says that both the president and board chair have to sign off on it. What happens if there's a disagreement and one or the other doesn't sign off on it?
Mr. Brickley, what happens at that point in time?
I get on the phone and I talk to you and see what the disagreement's about and see if it can be resolved. That's what I do.
Okay.
Generally, um, I'll indicate that, you know, in my close to forty years of practice, it is totally acceptable to have legal bills reviewed. They should be reviewed. Having them reviewed by more than one person is a good idea. And, so, um, the only thing when this subject came up is I indicated to, uh, the administration and to your board chair is that I simply wanna be treated equally as the way past board attorneys have been treated. Now, if in this process, I get a call and somebody says, "Well, you billed too much on this item," or, "We don't have you down for doing that work," or, "We didn't ask you to do that work," I talk to the, I talk to my clients about it and I resolve, we try to resolve the issue and come to an agreement. I have, in my close to forty years, have never had to sue a client over fees or anything of that sort, and it's always, we've always been able to find an accommodation. It's gotten to the point with some clients where they have decided not to pay my bills and because they felt for one reason or another, maybe that it was unfair, and if that comes about and we have a disagreement, then maybe our relationship ends at that point in time. I don't know. My hope is that I am, the, the bills will be looked at, they will be approved. I have documentation to support everything we do. Phone calls are documented on my phone with respect to the amount of time I spend, so I have that. So if there's any question with respect to actual, how much time we spend, I have got the documentation for it, but I'm not anticipating it. My, my, uh, my communications and work with both the administration and the board have been stellar up to this point in time, and I think we've developed a good trust relationship. And I have no doubt that if there is a question regarding my bill, we will be able to resolve that amicably to the point where you won't need to worry about it. And again, if, if something does come about where a dispute is lingering and it goes on, we'll, we'll work with both the administration and the board chair about that issue, and I'm sure in their wisdom, they'll decide whether or not to bring those issues to you or not. Does that answer your question? Yes, it answers mine. Okay.
Mr. Freeman.
Question. You know, we, we just, in fact, we're gonna be talking about this in the next item, but there were correspondences that were going out from the board chair to the college president related to the evaluation process, making representations within those correspondences that this was a board directive and that it was the board chair speaking on behalf of the board on items that we had not been brought or have not been brought before us, things related to human resources, and then the, the president's evaluation and employment. So, in this, you know, I'm, you know, was there any of the board attorney's time spent on this matter? You know, this is one where obviously the board attorney would have and should have advised the board chair that this is, you know, premature and that you'd actually have to have the board make a collective decision related to any of these items. So is this the chair directing the board attorney to do something which was not at the request of the entire board? That would be something that I would look at within the invoices to say, "Wait a minute, why was this, you know, there was legal review or there was, you know, some, you know, you looked at this information and we're being charged for something that was not a board directive?" Because the board attorney does not work for the chair. The board attorney works for the board. So these are the type of things that I would like to have access to or knowledge of and understand, is that how are our legal dollars being spent? Are they being spent at the directive of the board, or are they being spent at the directive of an individual from the board?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Mr. Swanson?
Mr. Chair, uh, Michael, I, I understand your concerns.
Uh, please direct your comments towards-
I'm sorry, I understand Michael's concerns. Would it be beneficial, could we make amendment to the, the motion to where a board member can look at those anytime they need to? Is that, are we able to do that, or?
By Robert's rules of order, I believe, but I will confer with the board attorney. Can amendment be added to this motion?
Sure, you can make amendments to motions, yes.
Yes, we can amend. I'm in the motion, so if you'd like to make an amendment?
Well, I would like to make an amendment that, uh, any board member can review the charges at any time. They just need to get, get ahold of the president's office or the chair or, you know, whatever. Would, would that work for you, Michael?
I'd say, well, I mean, if it was quarterly reports made available to everybody, it shouldn't have to be, you have to ask for it. I think that we should just be able to have access to it. We are a body. We should all at the same time get the same information.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? Yes. So the, the one issue that, that, the, the, in writing out legal bills, I try to be very careful not to disclose attorney-client privileges, okay? But it doesn't always work because sometimes the nature of the legal matters being addressed, I have to provide some information which could be considered attorney-client privileged. So, in our discussions with Dr. Beverly about this and with the chair, when we were talking about this process, one of the concerns was, we discussed this at length, and to simply have the bills looked at at any time with no oversight could open the door to attorney-client privileges being disclosed to the public. There is a process of redacting the bills or crossing out certain items that could be considered attorney-client privileged. Not to try to restrict anybody's access to the bills. The bills could be available under the Freedom of Information Act, by the way, if, again, with certain redactions made to them. So, I'm not trying to hide anything, but I just wanna make sure that whatever you do, we don't adopt a process, a procedure that would open the door to allowing possible attorney-client privileges to be disclosed to the public.
Currently, we have a motion and amendment. Do we have a second for the, for that?
Here, at this, at this point, I withdraw that amendment until there's more discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Reyes. My question is for the board attorney. I'd like to know, in, in this relationship, the board is the client, if I'm not mistaken. So, the board looking at anything that is done, it still remains attorney, attorney-client privilege. We've gotten in the past papers that we've had to look, that we've looked at and then had to turn back in because of the nature of them, but I'm just clarifying, the client of the attorney is the board.
This, your bylaws, seventeen-ten, indicates that, it's titled board attorney. I mean, that's the title of it. And it indicates that I am to work for the board and the college, that I report directly to the chairperson of the board and I report to the college president. And so that's who I report to. Now, at, at times, there's been other trustees that have gotten approval from your board chair to call me and ask me legal questions, and I have talked to them. But generally, the process has always been in dealing with other board members is that they would ask for approval to talk to me first, and then I would do that. And again, the same as with what you do is, you know, you, you don't act individually either, you act together as a board, and my role is to act as the board lawyer. I take my direction from the board chair and I take my direction from you as a group when you make, when you make requests of me as a group as well.
Mr. Reyes.
Follow up on, on that. The reason that I'm asking is because your response was to the request for a quarterly report or, or a general report, and you talked about the redacting and the opening of the client attorney privilege. So, I don't, I'm, I'm not understanding why those are mutually exclusive.
So, when I bill an item, it could be as simple as phone call with the old board chairman regarding, regarding scheduled meeting, okay? There's nothing legal, there's no legal opinions, there's no legal con to that. I try for the most part to word my billing entries in such a way that they don't disclose attorney-client privilege matters. There are times, though, that because of the nature, maybe the length of the time, maybe it was a half-hour phone call, maybe it was a, an hour meeting, I might give more detail so as there is no question with respect to why I spent so much time on that item. So maybe it might be half-hour phone call with board chair or college president regarding legal opinion on this issue or that issue, and I might provide some detail about what that is. So in those circumstances, the billing may in and of itself provide some- So in those circumstances, the billing may in and of itself provide some privileged information which, again, the board as a whole would have to act as to whether or not to disclose, to waive that privilege. The privilege is the board's as a whole. It's not mine, it's the board's as a whole. So that's where it is. And again, I think you would find, if you looked at the bills, that, you know, ninety-five percent of the bill, ninety-five percent of the entries are going to be more of the first type, where it's going to be phone call with board chair regarding policy amendments or phone call with, you know, a college president regarding, you know, something to do with something going on in campus, whatever. And it won't give that information, but there may be a few entries in there that do. And so, that's why I just think if you want to do that, there should be a process that would just protect the attorney-client privilege other than what would occur through a Freedom of Information Act request, because that's what would happen in a Freedom of Information Act request is, somebody would be tasked, the Freedom of Information Act coordinator would be tasked with redacting those items that could be considered attorney-client privilege before it could be disclosed to the public in general. Larry.
I'm just trying to put myself in the position of the president as she would be reviewing these bills, so I think in my mind, unless I'm missing something, we're right back to where we were as far as getting authorization approval. I don't think she would be, at any, would be able to approve or authorize the work that was being done at the request of the chair. So, because she wouldn't know, she wouldn't be privy to those conversations, she wouldn't know about those meetings, she wouldn't know to be able to say that was done or not done. And so I think we're right back to it's being authorized by the board chair, or if the college, if Dr. Beverly, in the same, goes the other way, if she should call Mr. Brickley about a matter and the chair did not know about it, then the chair couldn't approve that either. So that's, to me, it's again about just making sure that we have the documentation of any disbursement that we issue that has been authorized and it's been, and the work's been done.
Any other questions? Mr. Reyes.
On Larry's latest comment, does the motion as presented, in your opinion, does that handle that situation or not?
You're going to help me, I'm not exactly sure where we're at with the motions.
Check, check, check. Hello. So I want to go back to, real quick, to Trustee Swanson's motion that he rescinded that was going to be amended to be included in Trustee Couch's motion. I just want to get the language right just from the minute standpoint. So I, motion to amend, and it was, I just want to read it fully.
We tried, we took...
Right, just for the record, yeah. So, yep, so, the motion to amend, Trustee Couches, and treat it fully, it says, "Motion to have the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees with," and this is where your amendment, or motion to amend was, "with any board member being allowed to review any board attorney fees through a request of the president's office." Was that the language that you wanted for that?
Did you keep that as a motion, an amendment?
He rescended it, yep. So, but that was the language you wanted and that you're rescinding that, right?
That was mine.
Okay. So then, back to the original motion from Trustee Couch. Trustee Couch motioned to have the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees, with Trustee Wolcott seconding the motion.
Yes. That is accurate. My question was if that took care of CFO Garth's concern.
Go ahead, Larry.
Hello? So what I'm going to say is, that's what made me say what I said, is that I believe, and I'm not an attorney, I don't, I'm not a policy person, board policy, but right now, the way it would be is that there would be two individuals who would begin with authorization. One would be the president, right, and one would be the board chair, and is that something that the board is wanting to relegate to the chair, I guess, is what it comes down for me? But again, that's just my very non-legal answer.
Any other questions? Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, it would be my preference, I guess, for the, you know, client confidentiality. I guess that we would maybe during closed session actually have the, before us, we can discuss it and we can come out of it and then we can vote for the payment of the invoice. Do you do monthly invoicing or is it?
Yes, we bill you by the month. And again, the only caveat I will make here, Mr. Freeman, is that I just, I just simply want this board to try to use the same process it did with all previous attorneys. I don't, if there's a change in the process with our firm versus other firms in the past, I would like to know the reason why. And again, I'm not trying to hide anything here or anything like that, but, you know, the, to go into a executive session every month to discuss my billings could be very time-consuming, and I think there's got to be, there's a procedure, there's got to be a process that we can use that you can, I really think that, and in fact, what I could do is if you want, I mean, we, I could take a copy of the bill and redact it myself and send it to you every month if you want. I mean, that's not putting that in a formal motion, but I could show you what I'm billing. I could give you amounts. I, you know, if the board chair authorizes you to call me, I would be glad to answer any questions you have regarding any bill whatsoever and explain to you exactly what we're doing and why we did what we did, because I don't want, I don't want it to come across as I'm hiding anything or I'm trying to somehow squeeze something through that shouldn't be squeezed through, if you understand what I'm saying.
My concern comes from the fact that there's already been instances of engagement on issues that have not been board-approved. And so I guess for me is like, how do I, how can I be certain that the time which is being spent on board business is related to, you know, what we decide upon here in the room? Because as it says in our board policies and in any board, is that no individual is empowered to direct on behalf of the board, that the entire board as one unit makes all decisions. And so, my concern is, is that there will be times that one person may be directing the board attorney to do work which has not been authorized by the board.
If I may, board chairman, your policy in seventeen-ten says this, "The chairperson or the president has authorized the contact the attorney on legal matters concerning the college." So your board policy provides them with the directive to start this process of inquiring of me of legal issues. Yes, I am the board lawyer, but the process that is adopted by your policies in seventeen-ten-three indicates that the requests come through the chairperson and the college president. So that's, that's who I report to. I am the board attorney, but I report to the, to the chairperson and I report to the president.
But I correct you, though, he is not empowered to make any decision, though, to direct you to do something without, he may direct you, but it is our decision of how you're being directed to do that work. So quite honestly, if the chair contacts you with a directive to do something which has not been endorsed by this body, you are following the advice of one person who is not empowered to provide you with that decision.
That's inaccurate.
I disagree with you.
Are you an attorney, Mr. Freeman?
No, but I'm not stupid.
So let's look at policy thirteen-twenty.
That's very insulting, and so, I've served on this board for longer than you have, and so I do know actually, I'm sorry, someone correct me that our body makes one decision. This one body decides.
Policy thirteen-twenty states that the chair serves as the board liaison to the president.
Exactly, you're a liaison, you're, with what we want, you go back to her, you work at our direction. I've been board chair, you work at the direction of the board. The board chair does not make unilateral decisions on behalf of the board without the board's giving you that control and authority. You don't make decisions...
You're going to have to give me a specific example, Mr. Freeman, because right now you're making accusations.
That's going to be in the next item that we discuss, so we can get past this because we are going to discuss that.
Okay. Are there any other comments regarding this policy? Mr. Jordan, would you please read the motion again?
So, the motion that's on the floor right now is motion by Trustee Couch, seconded by Trustee Wolcott. The motion is to have the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment that the board gets a quarterly report, whether it's redacted or whatever, but we get a quarterly report.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion, to that amendment?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion regarding that? Seeing that, we vote on the amendment first, although for this reading...
One second. So, Trustee Swanson, if I read this in full with the language, so you motioned to amend Trustee Couch's original motion, which Trustee Reyes has seconded, and I'll read it in full, is, "Motion to have the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees with the board being provided a quarterly report of the board attorney fees."
Correct.
Okay. And Trustee Reyes has seconded it.
Any questions or comments from the board members? Roll call vote. Mrs. Couch.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Aye.
Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Wendy.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Myself, aye. The amendment passes. Now to the main motion. When you catch up, let me know so we can have you read that.
So with the amendment to the motion by Trustee Couch, it now reads as, trust, or motion would be, I'm sorry, the motion would be the chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees with any board member, or I'm sorry, with the board being provided a quarterly report of the board attorney fees.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing that, roll call vote. Mrs. Couch. You just turned your microphone off.
The roll call vote, I meant motion that was just made?
You just did.
That was for the amendment, this is for the amended motion. Would you like me to read it again?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is, "The chair and the president review the attorney fees and to be approved by both the president and chair of the board of trustees with the board being provided a quarterly report of the board attorney fees."
Yeah, I thought we were done. Yes.
Mr. Freeman. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Wendy.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Myself, aye. The motion passes. This is general discussion of the president's evaluation. Mr. Freeman, you seem to have had a lot to say about this.
I do. So in the past, the evaluation of the college president was typically handled by Goals and Objectives Committee, where they came up with a recommendation to the board on how the evaluation will be structured. In the past, we've, you know, we had one forum which was at the recommendation of our human resources director that suggested that the current, or the most productive way of doing evaluation was ongoing continuous improvement where it's not saved for the end of the year, bless you. But it was done throughout the process. It was ongoing conversations between the board chair and, and the board members and the college president about expectations and ways that the college president was actually meeting the requirements of the strategic plan which was dictated by the board. So, very clean, inclusive, where everybody agreed on a process that was undertaken. So, the board chair has not asked of the board, of the Goals and Objectives Committee to begin meeting on the evaluation process, and recently, the board chair has been sending correspondences and having verbal conversations with the college president about the way and manner in which the evaluation would be handled. So, I'm going to go back to about a letter that was supposedly on behalf of the board to the college president, which was asking for medical information, rationale, and justification for her taking of family medical leave. This had never been endorsed or approved by the board that this was information which was desired or expected. If any of you'll remember during, when it was announced about the president's time off for the family medical leave, the college president did give the date range, say, "This is when I'm going to be off," that they had provided all required documents to the Human Resource Department qualifying them for family medical leave. We all had ample opportunities to ask the board, or the college president, any questions that we had related to that, of her being gone. Really, if anyone had even probably gone up to the college president and said, "Hey, what's going on?" You know, she could have made the decision of what sort of medical information she decided to share. Reading the document which was sent by the board chair actually almost comes close to a HIPAA violation because you're asking for medical, documented medical information to be provided to everybody, and as you know, everybody's medical history or their information is theirs to give. They met the requirement within the Human Resource Department where all the information is kept confidential. It was being asked to share with the board, and you're talking about, you know, client confidentiality, you know, at what point does that become public information related to her medical condition and status? I'm very uncomfortable with that. I don't know what kind of review may have been provided on that email or that correspondence to the college president, but I for one can tell you that I nor anyone else, because I do come to all of our meetings, have ever heard any issue or question related to this until it was after the fact. She was in fact with us in Washington DC when she had come back from FML, and so this is when she received this letter and correspondence, which I find was completely inappropriate. Additionally, there's been a lot of questions or suggestions on process related to the evaluation, one of those that the, her personnel file be provided as part of this evaluation process, and if she refused to allow this to be provided to the board, that there would be, and I quote, you know, "There would be a resolution requiring her to provide that." I don't, you know, I've been a director and been involved with human resources quite a bit, and usually the personnel file is not... a bit, and usually the personnel file is not where you go to do the evaluation of a person's success within their position, but it's based on, you know, a clear, clearly articulated set of expectations related to the job, and then basically coming up with a way to report back how, how it's being met, what corrective actions might be required, whatnot. I don't understand the request for the personnel file. But there again, this is another decision that was not being made by the board, which it was being made by one individual person, sending out emails that, quite honestly, if I had received these emails as an employee, I would have been pretty offended, because there is almost this suspect language related to it, as if, I don't believe you, you need to prove it to me. So, this is really problematic for me. I think it puts the college in, you know, legally, I think that we could have some issues here. And our job here is to keep us above board, you know, transparent, and doing things the right way. And quite honestly, everything which is being done, I think puts us into legal jeopardy. You know, anyone who, Wendy, you've worked in the medical industry, you know HIPAA and the requirements related to confidentiality. I think we need to take that very seriously. And there again, you know, how many times have we not had quorum as of late? And that's on us, right? It's nobody else's fault. So, you know, repeatedly, we've had, you know, our, our accountants come in to do their presentation on, you know, our, our audit, and we don't have quorum, and they're, they find out the last minute, they're already on their way. You know, last time, we actually had to pay the expense finally, because they gave us freebies on that, but, you know, it was like, tonight was night, we all had to be here so that we could have quorum. So, if there was any confusion or lack of information related to why the family medical leave was being taken, that's on us to ask those questions and find out beforehand versus kind of now, this full reconciliation, which was asked for, to provide all documentation, rationale, and everything else related to why family medical leave was taken. That was requested, not our, at our request. Additionally, I don't remember ever being asked whether or not we should have a copy, each of us individually should have a copy of the personnel file, in order to determine the manner and method of the, you know, evaluation. So, in general, I'm very uncomfortable right now with this whole idea. I was board chair, and I remember that really what I learned was, you're not the boss of everybody else. You're there to run the meetings, you're there to ensure that Robert's rules are being followed, you're there to communicate between the college president and board members, to let them know, you know, these are things that we need to talk about or work on, but in no way is any individual person empowered to speak on behalf of the board. If I went out and I looked at any one of our staff members and said, you know, you need to give me a copy of your personnel file, or I'll make a resolution that you're fired, right? That would be ridiculous. I can't do that. No one on this board, as an individual, can make any decision on behalf of this body without the majority voting in favor of that. So, quite honestly, this is something that I think needs to be recognized and addressed immediately, that all correspondence which has not been publicly discussed or approved, or in executive session, in closed meeting, where it's a personnel-related issue, you know, we can discuss things there as well, but we all get the opportunity to discuss and weigh in on an issue. And that in the future, and this is where I would make a motion, is that any and all correspondence from this body must be reviewed and approved by this body, right? We all should know what's being sent out. I didn't get a carving, even a carbon copy of what was being sent to the college president. And that's where I feel we are very, we are liable for that. So, I don't support any of the correspondence, and I don't, I would assume that most people would not support this, without us all having a conversation and legal counsel related to any of the information which was being asked for or sent out by any individual board member.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Michael, where did you hear of the board chair demanding her personnel file?
So, during the committee meeting, I actually brought this issue up, and I told the president to tell me of any instance where the board chair individually has made a request or asked for any information. I'm guessing this happened right after the bylaws committee meeting. So, I told her and directed her to tell me anything, because I want to know any and all.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Correspondence. I need to.
But I was at the meeting where that happened, and that happened a little different than your version. It was asked, and whether it's right or wrong, it happened different. And I just want to tell you how, because I was there. The board chair asked her, would you like to include your personnel file for the evaluation? And Dr. Beverly said, well, she didn't know. She didn't think about that. And then she's come back a little bit later and said, no, I don't want to do that. And that was all that was said. There was nothing about threatening her to get it, that, that just didn't happen. So.
I guess I go back to, why was this even being discussed?
And, and that may be a valid point.
Without our, I want to know what's being asked for, what's being done, and that we all collectively approve a process.
I understand, I understand your concern, and, and I'm in agreement with you, but I just, that is not the way that happened, just so you know, because I was there.
It shouldn't have happened at all, especially out of a, out of a meeting, like it was after the meeting had concluded.
And, and do we have a copy of the letters that you sent?
There's one for you, Wendy.
I have, yeah. Excuse me for a minute.
These are the three letters that have been sent. One of those, Jeff, is for, each one, for each one of the trustees. They've got theirs. So as you'll recall, Dr. Beverly sent us all an email, and she said she was not coming back to campus, that she was going to be working remotely. A review of her contract does not allow her to work remotely. In her contract, it also states that she must live within 20 miles of the district that the college serves. You will find that on the first letter from February 6th. If you would like, I can read this, so everybody in the room knows exactly what I did. Dear Dr. Beverly, your presence on campus is essential to your duties and the success of the college. Furthermore, there is a provision in your contract that requires you to live within 20 miles of the district that the college serves. The Board of Trustees, the Michigan Community College Act, the bylaws, and policies of the board, and your contract define the terms and conditions of your employment. I do not recall any provision which allows you to unilaterally determine that your employment conditions would be. Please provide the following. All information sent to me will be shared with the board members and legal counsel and kept confidential. This would include a specific description of all your restrictions, a note or record from a healthcare professional which outlines your condition and the reasons for any and all restrictions.
HIPAA.
A statement of how long this restriction will last. If the restriction is only flying, can you provide any explanation why you would not be able to travel by other form of ground transportation back to Flint? The Board of Trustees will need to discuss your request to work remotely. There may be other questions that arise, and we will appreciate your cooperation in helping us to understand your present condition and limitations. If you think you will need more than a week to provide this information, please contact me. Thank you for your cooperation. Andy, government, chair, Mock Community College Board of Trustees. As you will recall, the president had stated she could not fly, and in her last contract negotiations, it was never given to her that she can work remotely. That's the first letter. Questions? Wendy.
Where it says, a note or record from a healthcare professional which outlines your condition, I believe the condition part is HIPAA, but the restriction is not. We need to know restrictions, right?
Well, the condition is HIPAA, absolutely.
We can ask the attorney.
So, dealing with a, an issue that crosses over to the American with Disabilities Act, and generally, the burden lays on somebody who is requesting an accommodation, that they provide the medical documentation related, not only to explain their condition, but the medical documentation to support their condition. So, the American with Disabilities Act, if in fact, and again, from what I understand, this is a moot point now, that Dr. Beverly has come back to campus, and it's not an issue anymore, so we don't have to get too far into it, but the American with Disabilities Act would require somebody to produce their medical records in that regard. So, the, it never got to that point, and it doesn't look like it's going to get to that point, but if somebody wishes to claim an accommodation, they have to under the ADA to produce the medical documentation to support the request for that accommodation, especially when, what, what the contract indicates is an essential element of her job, to be within such a certain radius of the campus.
You've, yes, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, as far as, which outlines her condition, it's none of my business, I don't care, but she's claiming restrictions, and as an employer, she, she answers to the board, correct? So, we're her employer, basically. We need to know what the restrictions are. I know that at my company, we need to know what restrictions are, because we may not let you come back with those restrictions, may put you on leave, pay you, all that, but you may not be able to come back to work. So, I, I have no problem with asking for her restrictions.
I didn't say the problem was restrictions. We can get restrictions, but I think that outlines your condition, that's to me a huge red flag. So, that gets into, that's a personal area I don't even feel comfortable asking about. I will go back to the fact that she provided, and she was pretty upfront about, this is when I'm going to be off, this is what's going to happen, we could have asked questions. Now, after the fact, someone decided to send this, and you were not directed to send this, which is an overreach of your authority, right?
In your opinion, according to policy 1320, I am the liaison between the board and the president.
A liaison is a middle, is a middle person.
Therefore, the board needs to know, as the president works for the board.
Liaison is the middle person, right? Liaison is the person who is, connects the two, right?
Let's get a legal opinion on that.
Of, we have an English professor in the audience, can you explain, am I correct? Is liaison the person who is the in-between?
Excuse me, you're out of order.
No, how am I out of order? But this is a, you said, it's a discussion. We're not even.
It's a discussion between the board, Mr. Freeman.
No, we're having.
You're out of order.
Okay, wait, how am I?
You're out of order, Mr. Freeman.
I still have the floor.
Please stand down, Mr. Freeman.
When did you take the floor? When did, when was the floor taken from me?
Would you please turn off his microphone now, sir?
You have, I'm sorry, the floor has been taken from you.
Would you please turn off his microphone?
And so, oh, God, and.
Are there any questions? Mr. Swanson.
I under, I understand what you're saying, Michael, about asking the condition and restrictions. I understand that, but I think a little leeway should be given, because it was a time-sensitive. She, she, she was going to.
Huh?
Remotely.
She was at the ACTP conference.
Okay.
That was working, and it was working, she had to be that that was.
Mr. Freeman, you haven't been recognized.
But she had stated that she was going to work remotely. And, and I think maybe a little leeway should be given, for this anyways, because it was time to, you know, had, had we had to get, have a special meeting, and Lord, we know how you like those, Michael. But I, I understand this. Now, for the rest of it, as far as the trustees as one, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, our board attorney indicated that under the ADA, if the ADA is being claimed, the condition and reasons, at what point was it determined that she was claiming the ADA?
It was presented to me as an issue of this being a possibility. I was not directed, the email was not directed to me by the president, nor did I have any discussions with her about her intentions, but it was directed to me that, what would happen if our board president decided to work remotely from the state of Virginia?
Wait, college president?
College president, I'm sorry. College president would, and so, it was expressed to, at that time, I had a chance to review her contract, which did indicate that part of her responsibilities was to reside within a certain distance of the college. And so, I did the legal research that I was requested to do, as to how could that be acceptable? What legal means would the president have to, to do, to work from a remote location such as the state of Virginia? And the American with, since a medical issue was being claimed as the basis, the American Disability Act was the act that I reviewed in order to determine what requirements existed under the American with Disabilities Act, and what would be required of somebody claiming the need for an accommodation under that act.
Mr. Reyes.
So, she asked?
She didn't ask, she told.
That the ADA?
No, she told that she was be working remotely.
Right. I don't understand where the ADA came in. Or why, if she didn't claim the ADA, then.
That's coming from other people, not from me. Alls I'm doing is trying to fulfill our contract with her. We have to review her contract, we have to make sure she's living up to it, that's all I'm doing, within the 20-mile district. If she's going to say she can't fly and she can't come back, we need to know why. And she can share the information or not, but she came back. So, all of this letter is mute at this point. She returned to work. Mr. Freeman.
So, I'm, I'm really disturbed at this whole idea that an individual can decide, without direction from the board, about contract, we're being kept out of contract compliance conversation, we're being kept out of questions that we reasonably could ask. I mean, had this been put in front of me, I would have immediately struck anything about requesting information on their condition. So, I didn't have a chance to weigh in and look at this. Now, as a liaison, I still assert the fact that you are taking back the will of the board and discussing that with the college president. In no way are you empowered to usurp our power as a body and make unilateral decisions on behalf of this board as an individual without our consent. This is any board. No individual is allowed to act on behalf of the body without that body's approval. So, quite honestly, any of this business, I disavow. This was not at my direction, this was not with my knowledge, any of this. So, this is. So this is all on the board chair and his doing this without consulting us. The common courtesy of talking to the board, which we could have done in a closed session, if it was a critical issue, we have had enough special meetings where we could have had a closed session with opinion of board chair. And I resent not being provided with information. And then the word "us" in this, "provide us", suggests that we have all asked for this information, which we did not.
That's the first letter. Remember, she returns to work, so that letter doesn't matter. The second letter...
I wish you would stop saying it's moot. It's not moot, it was sent. It's, it's a living...
She returned to work.
It doesn't matter, but...
So we don't need the information. We do not need this information.
Just like when you call somebody the P-word, and then you just ignore it, it doesn't happen, and then it just disappears. Is that it? Just disappears, it's moot? No, don't talk to me, Sue. I don't, no, I'm, we're in a public meeting, go through the chair. Go through the chair.
Mr. Freeman, point of order. Mr. Freeman, point of order.
I'm asking, I'm asking her, I'm asking her point of order.
Mr. Freeman, if you do not contain yourself...
Ask her to go through the chair.
I would entertain a motion that we have Mr. Freeman remove six feet from the table. Janet, do you have a comment?
Can you make a motion?
Yes, I do. I, I think we could move right along with all these little tit-for-tats between the two of you. I think we got other business here to take care of.
Thank you. The second letter is February the 9th. Our Policy 2150 requires the following. The Board of Trustees will evaluate the president on an annual basis. Criteria for the evaluation will be established by the board with the assistance of the president. The board will review the evaluation with the president in a closed or open session at the option of the president. In case an interpretation of written comments may be made, may be needed, the board chairperson may seek additional clarification from individual board members. In addition, your contract in Section 3A provides that we shall conduct an annual evaluation, and you may provide input as to both the content and procedure to be used. It is my intent to have the evaluation performed very soon. Pursuant to these provisions, I am asking you to provide to me the criteria you believe we should establish, as well as your input related to the content and procedure to be used. If you think you will need more than a week to provide this information, please contact me. Thank you for your cooperation, Andy Everman, Chair, Mock Community College Board of Trustees. We have an evaluation to be done. It's to be done annually. Last year, did not get it done, because we had no board attorney that could assist us with it. The year before that, Anne Figueroa was the chair, it was not done. My request, as we'll get into, into the next letter, is to be able to use the past evaluations, to look at those and use those to do the current, and to have the input for the president if there's anything that needs to change. There is no got you in this. This is simply fulfilling the obligations of the board. Mr. Freeman?
As I said at the beginning, in the past, the process was that the Goals and Objectives Committee would be charged with the task of coming up with a recommendation for how the evaluation would be done. Very clear-cut, easy. If the board chair desired this to happen, it could be put on the agenda, the committee could be charged to do the work and come back with a recommendation, right?
No, that's not right.
No, it is, it's 100% correct.
It's not in our bylaws.
This is 100% the way that we did it in the past. And had there been a difference, you could have asked the, the board, is there a different way that you would like to do this? Would you like a different committee to be charged with it? Shall we do it as a collective? This was not discussed. I go back to, this as my, me, I, I want this done. This was not a, like, literally, we weren't brought into this. Like, just now, we're being brought into this after these letters had been submitted. So this is the fault of the chair not engaging the rest of the board in this discussion in correspondence with the college president. And I think I would be much more comfortable having access to any correspondence or knowledge of what's going to be sent, so we can verify that we are all in agreement that this is the path that we would take. So we are a body, we need to act as such. Anything less is precipitous. And I don't, there again, I did not know this is going out. I did not know that we were engaging or starting the process, because it's not been discussed in a meeting. Like, this is something before anything was sent to the college president. We should have decided the process, you decided the process.
The contract...
Again, this, no, you decided...
The contract and the bylaws, should you read them?
No, 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 no. You decided how we would move forward.
Mr. Freeman?
What's wrong with asking the board what we want to do?
Are you done, Mr. Freeman?
I'm, I'm asked, I've asked you a question.
Is there any other questions?
I guess it's not going to be answered, so, thank you.
Do you have a question?
I thought that's what we're here tonight to do, Michael.
It was done.
A little premature. But we can sit and argue about this till midnight.
How do we stop, how do we stop this from happening in the future?
We need to discuss that.
How do, yeah, I just, I'd like to know, how many letters are going to be sent out without our knowledge?
Mr. Freeman, please be recognized before you speak.
But, but before us right now, we need to decide or have ideas on how we want the evaluation to go, correct? Tonight. You know, we can, we can kick this down the road and be here till 3 o'clock in the morning, or we can move on here.
This could, well, I mean, you're, this is gonna hap, this is gonna happen.
Mr. Freeman, you have not been recognized.
Should I sit six feet back from the table again?
I'm just, I thought that's what we're here to do tonight, so...
Yes. Any other questions? Mr. Reyes?
I move that we refer this to the Goals and Objectives Committee to begin the process of the evaluation of the president.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. First, is there any discussion on the motion?
Jordan?
Check, there we go. So Trusty Reyes, the motion you had, you ought to, you moved to, can you finish that motion for clarity?
Refer this to the Goals and Objectives Committee to begin the process of the evaluation of the college president.
Yes, Wendy?
I do want to say, last week, I spoke with Dr. Beverly regarding this issue. Regarding this issue, she was upset about this. She did tell me in December, she was going to tell the entire board what was going on and what was wrong with her. But then we ended up having our board canceled, our board meeting canceled. As far as I, I haven't heard anything, but I, I want to put that out there, that she did say that her plan was to tell us, but then we didn't have a meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Jordan, would you read the motion again, and then we'll have a roll call vote.
Check, check, there we go. One last time, so Trusty Reyes moves to refer this to the Goals and Objectives Committee? And then what was the rest of that?
To begin the process of the evaluation of the president of the college.
One more comment? If this is the leisure of the board, if the board wants quick action relative to recommendations being made, conversations with the college president, review of contract, looking everything over, we can try and have something back within the next month. Like, by the next meeting, we could actually have a recommendation to the board that everybody can review and agree upon, moving forward.
Yes, Jeff?
Let me, so you're saying that refer it to the committee? For them to come up with the criteria? They're not actually going to, as a whole board, we will do the, but you, just to come up with the criteria? And then we can discuss it and tweak it as we may?
I have one question.
And, excuse me. Michael, you said by the next meeting?
Have you discussed this, Mr. Freeman, with your committee?
Yes, actually, that was discussed on Wednesday. That would be part of my board, or my committee meeting report. That was the recommendation of the committee that we actually move forward a recommendation relative to the evaluation of the college president. That was the only item that was on the agenda.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sue, we're now voting, roll call, vote.
Jordan?
Check, there we go. So Trusty Reyes moves to refer this to the Goals and Objectives Committee to begin the process of the evaluation of the president of the college. Trusty Freeman seconded the motion. Trusty Couch?
Yes.
Trusty Reyes? I'm sorry, Trusty Freeman?
Yes.
Trusty Reyes?
Yes.
Trusty Walcott?
Yes.
Trusty Swanson?
Yes.
Chair Everman?
Yes.
That's six, eight, or six ayes and six nays? I'm sorry, six ayes and zero nays, the motion passes.
At this point, the board goes in recess for five minutes to take a break.
Sorry, I just... There's like 15 people in this room.
There's like fifteen people in this room.
Can you hear me? Okay. So since I've been on this board, that's the first thing that I was told, and it's been embedded, that we are not allowed to speak with any staff whatsoever, not allowed to have any kind of relationship with them. As far as everyone else, I'm only speaking for myself. There's no hidden agenda. There's no fact finding. I'm not going to look in, you know, and dig for things. That's not what I want. I want to be able to walk into a building and be able to speak with a staff member without being scared, without looking over my shoulder. And you and I have talked about this, Michael. We've talked about that there are staff members here that feel the same way. They do feel the same way. That's all I'm saying. Now, as far as anybody else, I can't speak for them. I just want to be able to have open communication and be able to speak with them as a normal person. No fact finding, no agenda, nothing like that whatsoever coming from me personally. But I'm willing to work with you, like you just said, and we can tweak this a little bit.
So, you know, with this whole idea of like absolute no communication, no contact whatsoever, I think that's a bit of an overreach because I've had conversations, I've talked to people informally. I tell people too, like when they want to talk to me, like let's say if they're going to report something within the college, you know, I let people know that as a board trustee, I have to report, like anything that has legal implication or something, it could be a lawsuit or something that's being done wrong, I need to report that. I have to contact our board attorney, I have to contact our board chair, you know, I can't guarantee anonymity, right? If it's someone who's blowing off steam and just says, I'm going to say this, but I don't want to say, you know, I don't want anything said, I'm like, well, then I can't act on it. You know, if you're just going to blow off steam, because this is a small community, we all, you know, know somebody who works here at the college, we all have, you know, have conversations, and it does happen. So there's absolutely no contact with staff members. I don't say that that's something we really regularly cover. Now, if it's something that's board related, that if it's anything about operations of the college, like the college president should be, no, like, no, if there's like something that I need to get, like I talked to Dr. Beverly and I say, I want a reconciliation of board expenses, you know, I think that's really important. I do, I tell her, not because it's who I have to go through, but also I know it's going to get done too. Like she'll meet with Larry and say, you know, trustee Freeman wants to see these expenses with the board, and then it gets done and acted upon. So like when it's these formal things related to the board, yeah, you should probably be going through the board president so she knows what's going on. Now, if it's about the board president, if it's something that is, you know, something that we need to investigate, that a person would not go through the regular channels of grievance or saying like, this is what's going wrong, that is a different avenue. Because then we do have to, then it is about someone reports it to me, I report it to the board chair, and then our legal counsel, and then we go into session, we decide how we're going to deal with it, we can do our investigation of what's going on and whatnot. So there are clean processes that we can go through that aren't this absolute. Like, I don't know anyone on this board who's ever been like covertly hiding and talking just like, hey, what are you doing this weekend? I mean, that's not the way things work. And I think you could walk up to anybody and talk about, you know, most things, just when it's board business, that's where we kind of have to step back a little bit and just make sure that we're being appropriate with what we're talking about and how it's being spoken about. So, yeah, it's restricted policy, is it perfect, you know, do we follow it like everyone's in terror? No. I mean, I've never operated like that, nor has anyone else. So I think that it's the overreach and where it's like, you know, if it's a social something or other, and you say, hey, I'm just asking you, you know, you have something in common, you want to go out to dinner and hang out, I don't think that there's any problem with that. You know, I think Dr. Beverly would have a problem. No dinner with, you know, with staff members, I want to get their opinion on something on birds. Whatever. So I just think that it's a little hyperreactive and a little like, these changes, I don't know that, and also like you make these changes, they may have now other implications. It's like the butterfly effect. So with one thing that you do, does it trigger a lot of other things? So I think that's what we need to really carefully reevaluate specifically with this where there are so many changes and recommendations related to this.
Any other comments? Mr. Swanson, you were the one that originally requested this during the budget hearings. So on page forty-seven, you can see, for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget development process, where the following exceptions apply. This was only for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget development. This is not permanent. So that was what you would ask when you said you wanted this brought?
He's got to fix your phone. Sorry about that. It was for the budget, when we were looking at, talking about the budget, that's what that was for. I wanted to talk with the departments to see if there was, you know, if they had any wants, wishes, stuff like that. And I have, I've been chastised in the past from talking with somebody, one of the instructors that I got chastised for, and it's sad because I've known the person since they were in high school. And I did get called on the carpet for that, so, you know, I have no agenda here, other than to find out wants and wishes of the people of the department. That's it. You know, now, I can, I see your point on the wording on number four. I see your point, maybe that needs to be reworded a little bit. But on the rest of them, I, I'm in agreement with them.
Mr. Reyes?
So in receiving this, what does that entail?
We receive it and we approve it at the next meeting. So alls we're doing is receiving at this point?
We vote on it at the next meeting?
What's that?
We vote on it at the next meeting.
We vote next meeting whether or not we actually make these changes.
Okay. Right. I just didn't know what receive meant.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
In my reading of this as well, I do have a couple of questions. Two, which also I'm trying to look at, the changes of two, to what's been modified and how it's related, and sometimes I'm seeing there's nothing related to the original provision and the update to it. It's kind of like this new direction. There's one where it says, board members either individually through committees or as a whole will not be allowed to alter job description, scope of employment, or otherwise affect terms of employment of any college administrator or employee while gathering information. My question is about while gathering information, so that means, but afterwards, yes? So that's where like, okay, we're done gathering information, now we're going to modify it. And so you can and will do it, the assumption is. Next, and kind of even talking about where we do talk about medical information of employees, personnel grievances, whatnot, that's completely been stricken from it. And then also, no employee will be disciplined, harassed, or terminated for communication with the board of trustees. No, no employee will be disciplined, harassed, or terminated for communication. What happens if an individual employee comes forward and fabricates something about what's going on on the campus? You know, what, you know, someone, she stole money, she took it. And then basically now, because that communication has taken place with a board member, it's found to be inaccurate, faulty, we already have, we now have, regardless of whether it was lied, you know, a lie, or it was something that was assumed or anything, we have, there is zero recourse that the administration can take upon that person for actually doing something. You know, you know, we've had policies and procedures that have worked really pretty well from doctor, you know, my experiences with Dr. Schenk Forward, and mind you that we've just created an absolute within the language. So no matter what's said, there is zero recourse, so anyone can say anything without fear of any recourse. You know, there's this discussion, and I've heard people's concerns about they feel like they have lack of access to staff members, employees, as if there's all these people are so hungry to say things to us, that, and they're being kept from it by policy or an individual. I would also assert that there's a number of staff members and employees who feel some comfort with this, that they only have to talk to one person and that they don't want to have board members doing individual fact findings. And, you know, I've talked to people in the past who have felt very uncomfortable with board members who have come up and said, well, you need to, you know, what's going on? You need to tell me about this. Like being put on the spot about something within the college that, you know, that they want a certain level of separation because they really, there is a fear with a lot of people on the campus and talking to employees that they don't want, you know, this is their job and their livelihood, and anything to be exploited or misinterpreted because of anyone's individual agenda is very alarming to them. So if they sense that there is an agenda behind it, so, and also, and I, you know, I have the situation at my own job where my board decided to, you know, like one person decided to have a response to public comment, right? So they wanted to address the person's grievance. And at the meeting, even though that was taking away my ability to actually research it, find out what has happened, and then report back to the board on what the resolution was, they were taking it at face value that what was being said during public comment was absolutely true, you know, even though it disparaged me and my staff, and come to find out, this person actually reported inaccuracies. And I looked at, he's like, why, we should, we should have to respond to people when they take the time out to do public comment. And I said, well, you need to respect me as a professional and allow me the opportunity to investigate, find out what's going on, and then report that back to you. So there is a reason why there is a delineation, and that, you know, I heard, you know, someone give their example, well, you know, I want to have dinner, if I just want to have a casual dinner with one of the staff members, I can't do that. I don't think that's really true. You know, if it's not about like college business or whatever, if it's like a social occasion, you know, maybe the person who was asked didn't really want to go to dinner with that board member, and might have used, you know, hey, sorry, we can't do this without permission. I don't know. But I get really uncomfortable with like, a lot of, like, I think that a lot of eyes really need to be on these policy changes because they really are being born out of the suspicion that something's being done and hidden from the board. And puts, you know, I can see why the college president would kind of wonder why these are being enacted. I mean, if I were in the same position, I would actually look at these like, why is this being done, or why is this important? So I think that this is something where the public, in looking at these four different amendments within our board policies, needs to be fairly aware of what's being suggested and what the implications are. Because something for someone's linear thinking of, well, I want to be able to do this, well, what are the unintended consequences of doing that, in particular when you use absolute language? Like what things can go wrong? Wendy, you were talking about that too. It's like, hey, wait a minute, you know, but if this happened, what about that? You know, and there's always, and that's why we also have legal weighing in on stuff, like what is the implication of each one of these? Where can something go wrong with doing this? Yeah, you might be able to do one thing, but it opens up Pandora's box on about twenty other things. So that's where I do, you know, I question some of the logic and the absolute language related to the policy changes or, you know, and this is where, you know, the first one is the one that actually has the most modification to it. But I really have a lot of questions, and I think we can wordsmith things a little bit better if there's another intended outcome that actually has legal opinion that looks at it from, you know, a number of different directions of what can go wrong with that.
Can you hear me? Okay. So since I've been on this board, that's the first thing that I was told, and it's been embedded, that we are not allowed to speak with any staff whatsoever, not allowed to have any kind of relationship with them. As far as everyone else, I'm only speaking for myself. There's no hidden agenda, there's no fact finding, I'm not going to look in, you know, and dig for things. That's not what I want. I want to be able to walk into a building and be able to speak with a staff member without being scared, without looking over my shoulder. And you and I have talked about this, Michael. We've talked about that there are staff members here that feel the same way. They do feel the same way. That's all I'm saying. Now, as far as anybody else, I can't speak for them. I just want to be able to have open communication and be able to speak with them as a normal person. No fact finding, no agenda, nothing like that whatsoever coming from me personally. But I'm willing to work with you, like I, you know, like you just said, and we can tweak this a little bit.
So, you know, with this whole idea of like absolute no communication, no contact whatsoever, I think that's a bit of an overreach, because I've had conversations, I've talked to people informally, I tell people too, like when they want to talk to me, like let's say if they're going to report something within the college, you know, I let people know that as a board trustee, I have to report, like anything that has legal implication or something, it could be a lawsuit, or something that's being done wrong, I need to report that. I have to contact our board attorney, I have to contact our board chair, you know, I can't guarantee anonymity, right? If it's someone who's blowing off steam and just says, I'm going to say this, but I don't want to say, you know, I don't want anything said, I'm like, well, then I can't act on it. You know, if you're just going to blow off steam, because this is a small community, we all, you know, know somebody who works here at the college, we all have, you know, have conversations, and it does happen. So there's absolutely no contact with staff members. I don't say that that's something we really regularly cover. Now, if it's something that's board related, that if it's anything about operations of the college, like the college president should be, no, like, no, if there's like something that I need to get, like I talked to Dr. Beverly and I say, I want a reconciliation of board expenses, you know, I think that's really important. I do, I tell her, not because it's who I have to go through, but also I know it's going to get done too. Like she'll meet with Larry and say, you know, trustee Freeman wants to see these expenses with the board, and then it gets done and acted upon. So like when it's these formal things related to the board, yeah, you should probably be going through the board president so she knows what's going on. Now, if it's about the board president, if it's something that is, you know, something that we need to investigate, that a person would not go through the regular channels of grievance, or saying like, this is what's going wrong, that is a different avenue. Because then we do have to, then it is about someone reports it to me, I report it to the board chair, and then our legal counsel, and then we go into session, we decide how we're going to deal with it, we can do our investigation of what's going on and whatnot. So there are clean processes that we can go through that aren't this absolute. Like, I don't know anyone on this board who's ever been like, like covertly hiding and talking just like, hey, what are you doing this weekend? I mean, that's not the way things work. And I think you could walk up to anybody and talk about, you know, most things, just when it's board business, that's where we kind of have to step back a little bit and just make sure that we're being appropriate with what we're talking about and how it's being spoken about. So, yeah, it's restrictive policy, is it perfect, you know, do we follow it like everyone's in terror? No. I mean, I've never operated like that, nor has anyone else. So I think that it's the overreach and where it's like, you know, if it's a social something or other, and you say, hey, I'm just asking you, you know, you know, you have something in common, you want to go out to dinner and hang out, I don't think that there's any problem with that. You know, I think Dr. Beverly would have a problem. No dinner with, you know, with staff members, I want to get their opinion on something on birds. Whatever. So I just think that it's a little hyperreactive and a little like, these changes, I don't know that, and also like you make these changes, they may have now other implications. It's like the butterfly effect. So with one thing that you do, does it trigger a lot of other things? So I think that's what we need to really carefully reevaluate specifically with this where there are so many changes and recommendations related to this.
Mr. Swanson, you were the one that originally requested this during the budget hearings. So on page forty-seven, you can see, for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget development process, where the following exceptions apply. This was only for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget development. This is not permanent. So that was what you would ask when you said you wanted this brought?
This is a recent I-bro.
He's got to fix your phone.
Sorry about that. It was for the budget, when we were looking at, talking about the budget, that's what that was for. I wanted to talk with the departments to see if there was, you know, if they had any wants, wishes, stuff like that. And I have, I've been chastised in the past from talking with somebody, one of the instructors that I got chastised for, and it's sad because I've known the person since they were in high school. And I did get called on the carpet for that, so, you know, I have no agenda here, other than to find out wants and wishes of the people of the departments. That's it. You know, now, I can, I see your point on the wording on number four. I see your point, maybe that needs to be reworded a little bit. But on the rest of them, I, I'm in agreement with them.
Mr. Reyes?
There is a spelling error. It's effect, not effect.
I'm sorry, where were you at?
On the number two for the changes. Says board members either individually through committees or as a whole will not be allowed to alter job description, scope of employment, or otherwise affect terms of employment.
So we changed that word? And is everybody in agreement to remove number four? No employee will be disciplined, harassed, or terminated for communication with the board of trustees? Is that what you were saying, Jeff?
Maybe it needs to be reworded. You know, I would hate for there to be repercussions to an employee, because they talked with us, but just the wording there, that's, that's not going to stop anything.
Let's have the attorney win.
So with respect to Mr. Freeman's concerns about the legality, I think one of my partners drafted this, but I think the concern with number four was specifically to avoid somebody being, I'm sorry, somebody being disciplined because they spoke. So somebody would come in and say, well, you're being demoted because I saw you over there speaking with Jeff Swanson, all right? And there's a specific law, which you can call the Whistleblower Protection Act, which protects employees from, in essence, blowing a whistle when they believe that there's public interest issues involved. So my understanding is that the concern of Mr. Swanson and the bylaw committee related to trying to make sure to trying to make sure that the employees believe that they were protected from, excuse me, adverse employment actions, if they were quote-unquote caught talking to a member of the Board of Trustees.
So already Whistleblower Act already covers us, right? Or any employee? Like if anyone's disciplined, discharged, anything for any perceived?
There is a Whistleblower Protection Act that can protect people. It's very complicated and detailed with respect to it. And whether it would cover the simple talking to a person? Okay, so let's say that individual A is simply talking to Jeff at a basketball game and says, just provides information about the financial needs of their department. He's not reporting a violation of law, he's not reporting any suspected possible wrongdoing. Then that person then goes back to their job and says, "We're demoting you." The Whistleblower Protection Act may not protect that employee because he wasn't reporting a suspected violation of law. So the Whistleblower Protection Act is actually, helps in some of these regards, but it is somewhat narrower than this. This is actually a broader protection than provided by the Whistleblower Protection Act.
Yes, Mr. Freeman?
So, but the way that this is written is an absolute though. Right? "No employee shall be disciplined, harassed, or terminated for communication with the Board of Trustees, regardless of what's being said or done," that they cannot, like let's say someone comes up and accuses the, you know, Dean of Arts or whatever, of stealing money. And I act upon that, but now because of the way that they reported something to me inaccurately, but you can't discipline, terminate, you can't do anything, even if it's incorrect information?
It indicates for communication with the board. It doesn't indicate lack of, it doesn't give a prohibition for actions. So if the Dean of Arts came up to Jeff and said, "I just stole a million dollars from the college," he couldn't be fired because he told Jeff that, but he could be fired for stealing the million dollars. Okay? So, and if you go to one of the other, one of the other provisions of the bylaws that was suggested to be amended, on the changes to the Finance Committee, there was added a paragraph 13 that says that the Finance Committee shall handle all allegations of financial or other budget irregularities and shall make referral to either internal or external auditors, college president, or other agencies if appropriate. So there is another amendment to your policy guidelines, which goes along with this, which is kind of needs to be read in accordance with that, so that if in those communications financial irregularities are disclosed, you do have the right to investigate that. What we're trying to do is we're trying to say, "You're not going to be disciplined simply for the act of communication." Now, again, if you, there's additional language to add there to make that more clear that you would like, we could work on that and, you know, try to make it clear that the actual acts are not being excused, but only the communication.
One thing, I'll just remind everybody that in every entrance interview with our auditors, they actually do a, like they sit down with us specifically and they ask us to report any irregularities, anything that we know. We actually do already do this and we're asked to do this as part of our auditing process. So we already do individually report, we can do it confidentially, we can do it in front of everybody. Anything can be reported to our auditors.
Mr. Reyes. On number four still, it says, "No employee will be disciplined, harassed, or terminated for communication with the Board of Trustees." What if the communication is initiated by the Board member and the employee refuses to communicate? A refusal to communicate with them, can that individual be punished?
The Board does not have any authority to discipline or otherwise terminate or regulate the terms of employment of college employees. So the Board could not do that. This is, this is thinking of the reverse scenario where by an employee communicating with the Board, then the persons that do have authority over that person's employment would take steps to discipline or terminate them in some way. So it's not in there because the Board doesn't have, and no individual member has the authority to discipline, terminate, fire, hire any employees, with the exception of the college president.
Mr. Freeman?
I actually think that would be a great addition to our policies, that as a reminder, that we understand that we have, and that people here understand that we have no ability to harass, write up, terminate any individual employee, that they are within their rights to not discuss things. That there is a right of staff, faculty, and students that, because that's my concern, is that when we're fact finding, which then I go back to my well-gathering information on number two, it's like, what information are we talking about? Like you have something where we're talking about not altering job descriptions, and then I don't understand the well-gathered information piece of it. Is this like an investigation or is it, I don't understand it?
Mr. Swanson, it was your request.
And because I wanted to gather information on the needs, if departments needed anything for the budget. That's what that was put in there for.
Like investigation versus while in contact with individuals or whatever. I just think that well-gathered information suggests, even though that is the intent, it needs to be articulated further so that anyone who reads it understands.
Then we can reword that.
Yeah. And that's just what I'm saying, is that to reevaluate some of this so that we can
I think I would prefer not to.
Do it on the fly?
Do that on the fly because that would bring about probably bad results. So something I will think about and circulate after the meeting.
Okay. Wendy?
So before our next meeting, and we have a second reading still, so write some things down for me. I would gladly tweak them in here and change this for both of you guys. Write, write, write. But I'm just saying, write them down so we don't, you know, and if there's something else that you want to add to that, get with us and we'll gladly, you know, work together.
Art? So my understanding from what Trustee Swanson said earlier is that this is, these changes are only specific to the 24-25 budget development process.
Yeah, go to page 47, flip the other page, go back one. And then you'll see it in red there.
I see for the 24-25 budget development process, where the following exceptions apply to, then it says, "The motion will supersede Board Policy 5008 in the following limited ways."
Correct.
And I'm not, that is not clear to me.
So the way it was explained to us is that this was going to be, so backup, we'll hear it just a little bit. The 5008 is a provision that was, it's been there for a long time, let's put it that way. And it's been pretty well established that the lines of communication should be the Board, talks amongst themselves in open meetings, the Board Chair communicates with the college president, and the college president communicates with the Board through these meetings and through the college president. That any requests for information have to go through the college president. And when it, that's just the way it's been, and it's been approved by your accrediting agency in that regard. So when these changes were discussed, of opening this window up, it was, some concern was raised by the administration that this, as to what the Higher Learning Commission might do regarding the accreditation. And so in order to try to assage any concerns that they had, the attempts were made to try to limit this policy change as much as possible. One, by limiting it solely to budgetary issues, and two, by limiting it solely to this time period. So in essence, give it a shot, see how it worked. Again, this doesn't, this policy doesn't require anybody to talk to any of the Board members, and they could not be disciplined if they chose not to talk to the Board members. So it's just, I think, an attempt to see if we were to open this window just a teeny bit, how could we do this? So at the meeting on the policy meeting the other day, we added this language, which said, "For the 2024-2025 Budget Development Process," and that was a term that we took from Mr. Guthrie, we asked him his recommendations on that. "The following exceptions apply too." And so that's the genesis of how this language came to be. It was believed that that language would best be used to try to limit this process as much as possible to this very limited specific circumstance where 5008 would be amended. I hope I answered your question.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We'll all call a vote to move this forward to the next meeting for approval. Isn't that automatic? I'm making sure that we've got everything covered. Do we have everything covered with us?
Andy?
It's been read, yeah.
Right.
It's been read, it's been introduced, and so it's in the record now.
So we don't have to take a vote?
There's no vote needed, no.
Very good. A change on this, you'll see on page 490. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, number three, there's a change about bids on purchases exceeding $50,000. This is from 125. Must be recommended to the Board for approval. Number three of the first section of 441s who are purchasing says bids, still says, "Bids on purchases exceeding $125,000 must be recommended for the Board for approval." So in one, it's saying 125, the next one says 50,000, and then in addition of in case of emergency, the administration is authorized up to 100,000, up to 100,000 with Board approval, which I'm trying to understand that one. I mean, usually it's how much you would do without Board approval.
We're going to let Mr. Guthrie explain.
And so that's one. I'm still, yeah, you can respond to that, Larry, of course, but.
I just think that's a typo, it should be without.
Okay. So it is without, that's good. But my question is, is that how many bids on purchases do we have which exceed 50,000 versus the 125 threshold we had? And how much additional work now? I mean, like, does that now take us from 10 items that we approve on expenditures over 125, but decreasing that threshold to 50? I mean, are we now, you know, micromanaging now, you know, small amounts, $55,000 expenditure that fits within the budget, which is approved by the Board, that there should be some budget authority on? I'm given a budget by my Board, and then I'm able to spend the money as long as they're within those categories, because expenses come up and I don't have to have my Board approve every single one, as long as I have Board authority to do it within those silos within my budget? So I see why we would want like anything over 125, which is getting up there, and then all of a sudden it's kind of like, "Hey, you should give us a heads up, if it's over 125, we should know about it." But anything less than 125, you're just allowing the administration to act within their authority on, you know, what we approved within their budget. Because, you know, in the world of expenses, I mean, 50,000 probably happens all the time versus like 125, which is then a good control. And what would be industry standard for community colleges relative to what other Boards do, as far as what is their threshold of budget authority for the college president and administration versus what has as a special, above and beyond that, we need to actually weigh in on? And that would be a question for Larry Guthrie.
Larry, would you like to answer that?
I guess the way I'll answer it is clearly it's going to be more, right? Between 50 and 120, I don't have the data and did not go back and tried to compile all the purchase awards for the past year, past two years, and see what that threshold was. But clearly there will be many more that come to the Board, without a doubt.
Mr. Swanson?
Actually, this isn't how I brought this at the meeting the other day. I want to be noted, the Board to be notified on purchases or orders over $125,000. I never said that we had to approve that. It's, we need to be notified of that. Now, for engineering changes, cost overruns, I think the $50,000 is pertinent there. I think 125 on a cost overrun is too much. That's all I'm saying. You know, the Board approve on cost overruns on a bid project, a project that's, we've approved already, $50,000 and we have to approve it. But as far as purchasing, no, I understand, they'd be coming to us all the time. And that's not what I had said.
I don't know which one had their hand up first, but did you have a comment to help figure that out?
For, I do have a specific.
Your microphone's now.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a specific comment. So Jeff, I believe the way this got written was, this got changed to 50,000. You're saying that's not the way it was that you presented it, with a hard line, 50,000 bid. Then came about the discussion about the changes we had and, you know, how they accumulate either 6,000, 4,000, and they may be small amounts. And then it was agreed upon, I believe, that it would be as any change orders on any project that go over 50,000 would be brought to the Board and informed, not approval. So that you would always know where we were at on the cost overruns, is what you're saying.
Well, on bid programs, which I believe is the next bylaw change, so we'll keep that separate. As far as the purchasing goes, it was, the Board needed to be apprised. We need to keep track of that, all right? You let us know. We weren't negating what you could do.
Mr. Freeman?
So that makes sense. I mean, essentially then the policy is still like the 125, they can do, you know, they come to us for anything over 125. And then what you're saying, if I understand this correct, is that if there's any like change order in excess of $50,000, that should be then reported to the Board?
That should be approved. If it's a bid program, say the Praw Center, just say, all right, and they miss something, they need another $200,000. That needs to be approved by the Board. You know, that's basically our, why we're here.
Right.
Okay? But as far as purchasing goes, no, I, I just, I want the Board to be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I agree.
Art, you have the next question.
So this does not reflect?
So the language that's here does not reflect the conversation or?
Bill? Let's get the wordsmith correctly.
No, I mean, I think it's going to be more than wordsmithing because.
No, I mean, I think it's going to be more than wordsmithing, because...
There's just, there's just two issues here.
One is, the amount that you would want to have approval on before they spend money, and the second is, being advised of cost overruns. So, these are two separate issues. Whether you agree with them or not is not the issue, it's just, this policy was presented and is being read now, and you vote whether you want to adopt this change next time around.
I understand that procedure. I understand that. But since the conversation went to, that is not what Jeff intended, I'm asking, if this is not reflective of it, then where did this come from?
I think it was a misunderstanding. This is what I attribute it to. I never, well, Larry, you and I talked about this. And it was, the purchasing for software or whatever, if it didn't go off for bids, then we just need to know about it. So, I'm, I'm really not in agreement with the way this is worded.
Okay.
Okay, now, well, we'll get into the next one for the bid programs after we finish this
Previous to trustee Swanson's comment, so bids on purchases exceeding $50,000 must be recommended to the board, so we are going to take out approval, and it's just now going to be informed, correct?
That was the way we just discussed it, is that correct?
Well, he said he didn't say that.
Well, no, if you recall at our, the meeting last week, the Board Policy and Bylaw Committee meeting, the issue was brought up, and the committee agreed to present this proposal as written to the board as a whole. So, it doesn't mean it's going to be voted or approved, but what this is saying is, all you're doing is changing the amount of the exceeding issue. And so, let's go back at one example. When you guys did that most recently was the IT contract last summer. If you recall, there was an issue where you guys had to come in and vote because it exceeded the $125,000 figure on that process. So, what this is, this is, this is that type of situation. So, what is that minimum amount going to be? And that's, that's all it is. It's not about, it's not about giving information, it's simply about getting you whether you approve it or not. Wendy?
I understand, you said the committee agreed on this. I was giving this information at the committee meeting, reading this, and so, I wouldn't have agreed to this had I not known that Jeff didn't want this. You know, that's why I said in the committee meeting, I know you all heard me, I said, Jeff needs to be present or needs to be a part of this, because this is, this was his deal, and I wanted to make sure that this is what he said. And clearly, it's not. I would have never agreed to this, is what I'm saying.
Did you, wait a minute. Did you have your hand up first, Art? Because I wasn't sure when I kind of... No, okay, so, Jeff.
This is just a recommendation I made. It's not my deal.
It's your deal.
I just thought it pertinent that we change this. But I'm against the way it's worded, and, but, we have next meeting to read it and to vote on it. And unless it's changed, you know...
Yes, Larry, sorry.
Just so that I'm clear, because I recall the conversation that we had, and then, the policy committee meeting was after with, with us, but you weren't there. As I'm understanding what you're saying is, number three can stay the same, as long as there's an addition of some sort of either approval or information of change orders exceeding a threshold.
Was it information?
Yeah, and the, as far as the, for the overages on the bid, that's in the next bylaw change, has nothing to do with this one.
Yeah, there was things, and we did go over the $50,000, but the way that's written, I need to let you know, and I thought that was the understanding that we had prior, that was communicated, was, again, a cumulative total, once it exceeds 50,000, any size project, once it exceeds 50,000, the board would be informed of that in a reasonable amount of time.
On this bylaw, as far as purchased?
Anything, any project that we would do, yes. Even, even a construction project, a large...
Well, construction proj, as far as I'm concerned, that any, you know, you're going to have cost overruns on just about anything you do, all right? But it's notorious that things happen to where a company comes in, they bid low, and they know there's going to be overages, and they just hammer the school for those overages. So, something that the board approves 500,000 for might end up at over a million dollars with cost overruns. And I know, and I see that look, but...
No, I'm, yeah, no, I'm really trying to think, because there are, like, for example, on construction projects, they're kind of, we have, we talked about this, and I'm not even using Praw, because it's way too large. So, we have a $4 million construction project, and in that, we have contingencies, right? We talked about contingencies built in, owners and the builders. And so, that is a part of that. So, we're looking hard costs, maybe at 3.5 million and a half a million contingencies, right? So, the total is 4 million. So, within that 500,000, we say that we receive board approval up to that amount, so if we use that in increments of 10,000, 100,000, 200,000, then we would never bring that back, because...
It doesn't matter, because you've already been approved for 4 million.
Okay. So, after the 4 million, you're saying, then that would be...
Yes.
Okay. So, at the bid amount or the award amount you're talking about?
The award amount.
Yes, okay, all right. So, and the other thing that I brought up, and we talked about this as well, was just for efficiency purposes, and making sure that we're able to keep the projects going, if there's a change order that comes in that was missed by, let's say, was missed by us, and we, there was something we didn't do right, or whatever, it doesn't really matter, right? But that's contingent on that project for anything else to go. If it's, you want approval on that, which you're entitled to do, if you want approval on that, then it will stall the project, potentially. And that's another consideration. So, that's why it was determined that any project, any change order, let's say there are even $1,000, and there's 50 of them on one project, that would come to you and let you know that that's what happened with this project.
You would track that?
Yes.
It wouldn't have to be approved?
That's the way it's currently written, because of this whole thing about construction projects, you guys only meeting once a month and delays.
No, I understand that.
Yeah. But I was just trying to get clarification on what it was that you were intending, that's all. And I think it's different than...
Have I explained it enough, or do I need to explain it different? That's just my feeling on this.
Right, and I think I got it. It's 125,000 still. Anything, any change orders that exceed, in the aggregate total, that is brought to you, we inform you of that once that happens.
Yes.
Yes. So, I think the second part is written that way, about the 50,000 aggregate, and informing you. This part is, then I think, this part, in my opinion, Chair, would be, then, there's nothing that needs to be done with this, according to what you're wanting, wanting done.
So, let's have the board attorney weigh in now. So, I was just going to, I was just going to comment on 4410, this is the general purchasing provision of the bylaws. So, it reads, "General purchases should be based on quality and price." So, this talks about general purchases, it's not limited to construction contracts. The next provision that we're talking about is related to general construction contracts and change orders. So, I just, I'm not saying whether it's good, bad, or different, I just want you to know there's a distinction between these two provisions, one applying to all general purchases, and the other applying specifically to construction projects, and there's change orders.
The one we're talking about presently, this one, that's on purchasing?
Yes.
Yeah, the next bylaw will be on construction projects that have been approved by the board.
Does everybody have all their questions asked at this point?
Flurry's mugged now.
Okay. Let us move on then to item 1.84. It's on page 492, and it's item number five. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Let's move on to 1.86. On 1.85, you want to ask a question?
Oh, 1.84, or, yeah, 1.84. We just did, which one did we just do?
We just did 1.84. And that was, the board chair, board finance committee chair, shall be advised within a reasonable time with change orders accumulating to 50,000.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry. I was confused.
Okay, we're good with that. All right. Mr. Reyes.
Check. We're on 1, we're on 1.85.
Yes.
Do we, we're done with 1.84?
Yes, and we've gone to 1.85. There was no comment on the other one. Mr. Reyes, you had your hand up.
Yeah, on the very large paragraph at the beginning of this, "If time constraints preclude a meeting of the full board to discuss hiring the consultants, the executive committee may meet to approve the initial contract with the consultant." The executive committee represents a quorum. So, if you're going to call a meeting that's going to have a quorum, calling a special meeting would be, then you, then you have the full board present anyway. Because the executive committee of the treasurer, the secretary, the chair, and the vice chair is a quorum of the board. So, it's, it's in fact having a special meeting.
You are correct, Art. Let's talk to the attorney about that. How did that end up like that? All right, so, a little bit of background. During the period of time that you were without counsel, you folks made a motion and approved a motion last year to make two different hires. One was to hire somebody to assist the secretary, and you used the term secretary-designee in those discussions. And second was to hire a CPA slash financial analyst to assist Mr. Swanson in his duties as the finance committee chair. So, when I became involved, when you guys approved our retention in December, one of the first things asked of us was, how do we implement these two things we voted on last year? It's been six months or so, let's do this. And so, after consulting with the administration and the board members, it became apparent that the motions that were made and approved didn't allow communication between the secretary and these employees, which would in essence be employees or contractors of the college. So, we basically decided to start from scratch. And I had a meeting with, when Dr. Beverly was on leave, I had a meeting with Acting President Wilson, and we talked about some changes to be made. I drafted some changes at that time. Upon Dr. Beverly's return, I shared the changes with her. She came back with her own suggested changes. The first paragraph here is something she found on the Lansing Community College in their bylaws. So, that first paragraph, which is not highlighted, which is in red, is actually the language adopted from the Lansing Community College guy, board policies. And the idea being that if this was acceptable for Lansing Community College, it likely went through the approval process of the Higher Learning Commission. And so, the concern was, we want to make sure that if we're going to do anything, it gets approval from the Higher Learning Commission, and it doesn't jeopardize the standing of the college with their accreditation. So, yes, it could be an issue where the executive committee is in essence the meeting of the board, but we would just deal with that by noticing the meeting in accordance with the Open Meeting Act and handling it in that manner. And, but, given the fact that it's been approved by, likely approved by the Higher Learning Commission, the thought was, let's not, we can work with this language. It would allow us to provide consultants to the board beyond the financial consultant that you guys approved last summer, and so, if there were needs for consultants in other ways, this would give you that approval and flexibility in that regard as well. But in essence, it's coming back to the full board anyway, but like I said, given the fact that the language is approved and being used by the Lansing Community College, the thought process is, let's stick with that and go that route. Did I answer your question?
It leads to a couple of other questions. First, does Lansing Community College only have seven members? So, does a, does a meeting of their executive committee constitute a quorum as well?
Yes, the answer to your question on that, the first one, is on the Michigan Community College Act 331 of 1965, we all just have...
Any community college, seven. Okay. And if we're going to take the time, my second thought, is that if we're going to take the time to post that we're going to have a meeting of the executive committee, then we can post that a special meeting is going to be, is going to take place. I don't understand, I don't want to cede that to the executive committee. I mean, and just as an example, say, the executive committee gets together and it passes three to one, but the full board, it may fail four to three. So, we're, we're not necessarily getting anywhere with it, because when it comes to the full board, then the full board's going to act to reverse the action that's taking place. So, why don't we just do a special meeting in that instance? I mean, when we, that's what a special meeting is for.
This makes sense to me. I, I agree with you, Art. So, how do we need to change this? So, we handle it. Mr. Vertley?
You would just simply, you would just simply cross out that one sentence. So, where it starts with if, because remember, this, this is only provision if time constraints were to, so we just take out that sentence from if, down to the thing where it says approval to the full board, just take that out, and then, that provision isn't in there.
Michael, you've been gone, and did you have any questions on this one?
It was my race. I mean, the only thing I would say is too, about, I mean, we've had this conversation around administrative assistant, and then, you know, financial assistance. We do have, I mean, we have an auditing firm already that we've engaged, and we pay handsomely, that can provide us any outside, like, that's their job, is to be like the outside independent evaluator of our financial systems and our information. I'm just trying to figure out the need or necessity, and I'm looking at from a dollar's perspective, is that how much money we're spending for things that could potentially be redundant? You know, we already have, I mean, even though Jordan works for the college, Jordan provides the assistance that we require, you know, that supplement for the board secretary, and then, we have auditor, we have Larry, who's, who can provide any and does provide information. I mean, every month, there's a discussion around the financials that we can dig deep into any questions that are there. I just don't understand the need. I see, like, sometimes if you have an extraordinary situation that is beyond the capacity of what we have to bring a consultant that can talk about a specific issue, like, let's say, our board attorney is not really versed in, let's say, real estate development, looking at, like... at like tax credit, like new market tax credit transactions like we had with the, the Culinary Institute. That's a specialized skill that I wouldn't expect that our board attorney would have, because that's a very specific person that does that. For them to come independently, I fully support that. That's, that, we all need to be counseled on that, so we all know, you know, the implication of doing something like that. But just like generalist stuff, though, I just wonder that, is it spending money that's technically duplicative? You know, because I mean, both of you, even in your time, you know, as secretary and treasurer, you've learned a lot, you have a lot of input, I mean, you get how things go, and I can see like when we were starting out, how you wanted to have additional assistance, but I mean, even like the things that you are discussing about what happens when this happens, I mean, these are procurement, procurement and finance issues, they're relevant and appropriate. So I just wonder if like now, do you really need to have that supplemental assistance to feel comfortable in what you're doing, you know? So.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? We'll now move to 1.86. And the part that is changed is on page 496. It's item number 13. Any questions? Mr. Freeman?
I would just say that 13 is kind of redundancy. I think I already pointed that out, that our auditors already ask us to report that. And it can be reported in any fashion we want. And definitely, you know, they almost encourage us outside the college, you know, it can be done anonymously. We can say anything that we want to the auditors if, or suspect anything, and it's their job to investigate that. So I already think that we've got that covered, but just my opinion.
Seeing none, let's move on to the informational reports. Acceptance. Finance Committee report. Mr. Swanson?
Finance Committee did not meet this past week.
No?
Okay, we met on February 21st at 4:00 PM. So if anybody is interested in the minutes, they're right there when you first walk in.
Board policy. We're working on it, and you've seen the first things that they've brought forward. Goals and Objectives Committee?
Goals and Objectives Committee met on Wednesday at 5:30, made the recommendation that we develop an evaluation process for the president involving human resources and legal to make sure that we have a fair, equitable, and appropriate process, and that, and we acted upon that already, so I think we're good.
I have to ask the attorney a question. So on the Goals and Objective Committee, we have one of the members who has resigned. And I would like to serve on that, so I am nominating myself. Any questions? Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I actually had a conversation with our board attorney about that, and I think that, given some of the history related to things that have been already submitted to the board or the college president, that it would be a better, more productive conversation if we had somebody else serving in that capacity. So we already have one person who may or may not be in attendance, or if there's any way that we could involve them, that would be fine. But I think that actually would probably be in our best interest to have someone else serve in that capacity.
The motion is for myself. Is there a second for that?
Can the board chair make motions?
Janet, would you like to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, can I speak for one second?
Yes.
We all know this is going to be a recipe for disaster with you and Michael on the same committee. Let's be real. And nothing's going to get done. Am I right or wrong? So I, I don't know if, I don't know if that's a good idea. I mean, we can't even get through a meeting.
Mr. Reyes?
I would volunteer to sit on the Goals and Objectives Committee.
Very good. I would appoint Mr. Reyes with the approval of the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Jordan, did you get that? So they're pointing to the Goals and Objectives Committee.
My, my question is, does anything have to be done formally since trustee Walcott does not want to be on the Goals and Objectives Committee?
I've already done it. I've sent a resignation into the chair and the attorney both.
Okay. Okay, who is, so the motion is to appoint trustee Reyes to the Goals and Objective Committee. Who is the one that made the motion?
It's the appointment.
Or, I'm sorry, motion to appoint trustee Reyes. Was there?
The chair makes the appointment. The voting of the board.
Yeah. There's no objection to his appointment.
Trustee Couch?
There was no objection.
No, there's no objection.
Did you say Walcott vote though?
No.
No, it's not.
No objection.
It's just, no objection.
Done deal.
Okay, you got everything caught up? Thank you. Other reports. The MCCA Board of Directors, it would be Mr. Daley. Jordan, can you tell us what's happened on this?
With, no, I cannot.
Michigan Community College, Wendy, you're the backup.
I am the backup. However, remember when I spoke to you, Jordan, I had said that I'm not stepping on Mr. Daley's toes, that he is the one, we talked about this, that was going to attend the meeting. I said, I'll put it in my calendar. If he does not attend, or you don't know that he's attending, let me know and I'll go. And I never heard from anybody. So I assumed Mr. Daley was in the meeting.
And those meetings are Zoom meetings, so. Okay.
So for, for your awareness, trustee Walcott, so trustee Daley intended on attending it, or planned on attending. Dr. Beverly or VP Wilson was not made aware until after the fact that he did not attend, and I was not made aware until I talked to trustee Daley after the meeting took place. So therefore, there was no ability to make you aware to attend his place. So just wanted to make that clear for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. The ACCT Board of Directors, Mr. Reyes? The ACCT held its National Legislative Summit in February. I don't remember the dates. I think it was in February.
It was, 1st of February.
1st of February. Yeah, I spent two weeks in DC, so I can't keep them straight.
Where we outlined the legislative priorities from the ACCT, and we had the opportunity, trustees Walcott, Freeman, and myself had the opportunity with Dr. Beverly to, to talk with our congressperson as well as both of our senators regarding the legislative priorities. And then the Board of Directors did meet, and we got a slew of new members on the board. So we, in the meeting, it was kind of going through procedures and things of that nature. There is an upcoming meeting in July, but until then, the Board of Directors will not meet.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, do you have any insight into anything in DC? I think Art's covered it, but in case there was something you'd like to add.
No, I think, just, I think that our visit to the Hill was really effective and had great conversations, really talked about what the priorities were of the elected officials as well, and where there was alignment between, you know, what we need on our campus specifically, what the kind of broader goals and objectives are. So I think it was, it was a great conference and a lot of really good learning there.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Wendy, you were also there.
I was. I actually typed something up. Okay, I'm going to read it. This month, I along with college trustees, college trustees from across the country, once again traveled to the nation's capital for the annual ACCT conference. As many on the board know, when attending these conferences, I like to grow and learn as a trustee, but not work on behalf of the betterment of the college. I'm happy to report that the both general sessions and individual classes alike were informative, and here's the main takeaway as a whole. All colleges are facing serious issues and must work together in a collaborative effort to overcome them. Issues discussed range from child basic care needs grant to infrastructure, federal funding, mental health services, and more. While in Washington, we headed to Capitol Hill to meet with our lawmakers in our respective offices. This year was unique and emotional as some of our legislators are retiring. I would like to thank Senator W. Stabenow and Congressman Kildee for their service and wish them the best moving forward. In DC, we traveled to the offices to meet Stabenow, Peters, and Kildee. They gave us updates on the current issues while showing us a path for whoever takes their seats. As Secretary of the Board, I'm working to grow relationships on behalf of our campus. This includes the next office holders in which we will work with the next year. Senator Stabenow hit a great discussion on the Pell Grant and how she wants to fight to continue post-retirement. In addition to all the classes and presentations from elected officials, we also heard from keynote speakers, including former Michigan Governor Jennifer Granholm. I personally took the time to focus and speak on the basic needs grant for our college. In conclusion, I found my second conference of the ACCT informative, beneficial, and a tool to help me grow as a trustee and elected official. I will end my report by saying, it's not all about what you learned, it's about the connections that you've made along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. In October, we went to Vegas. Jeff, I don't want you to feel left out. Do you have a report?
Well, I can say a few words that won't be like Wendy did, but hell, it was a good time. It was Vegas. What can I say? Pretty much broke even, at least that's my story. And.
Dear lawyer.
But anyways, no, we went to a bunch of different breakout sessions. Some of them very interesting. We went to one that, what was it, San Juan or?
No, San Jose.
San Jose State, that they were doing with their health programs. Actually, Wendy and I have been talking about this in the board-generated ideas. We can explain more about that. And Wendy, Wendy has, she's got, I don't know, 30-some pages on it that she's probably going to read, but we can do that. And I want to get out of here tonight sometime, so I'm going to close with, we had a good time.
Very good, thank you. Item 10, which is unfinished business, 1.87 and 1.88. That's Assistant Secretary Designee on the CPA. As you can see from tonight, we're still working on that. Now we move to administrative items, and Larry, this is your turn.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have several things for you. I will start with enrollment and start of school update with VP Wilson. Absolutely. And then celebrating employee and student success. I like the way you think.
Mr. Wilson?
Good morning. All right. So, thank you. Like to discuss enrollment. You can go to the next slide. We continue to be strong with enrollment. Head count for winter is 64, 31, 5.7% up from last winter. Contact hours are 64,148, up 3.7% from last year. The start of school was successful. We had another successful holiday mini-mester. As you know, January presented us with some weather challenges, but I really admire the way the college was nimble with different things going on. The main thing that the college really was nimble on was the nursing penny. Really did a good job, and it's a pleasure to have the trustees joining us for that. Classes have begun, we're in normal operations. A topic that you will hear from me about throughout the year is the delays that have occurred with the FASFA and the impact that that has had on colleges. We have a plan in terms of how we're addressing that. You'll hear from me throughout the course of the year on how that plan is going, but it is an issue that quite honestly threatens our enrollment for next year. Students and financial aid are synonymous with this college, and so we need that process to be smooth. Also want to bring to your attention the celebrating employee and student success. It's 97 and 98 here. They were unable to stay with us this evening, but I want to recognize Carla Clark and Valerie Rieger. They worked on a grant with an organization that we partnered with on other endeavors, specifically Robert Matthews has introduced, introduced us to this organization, New America. We've been selected to participate in the Child Care for Student Parents Community College Cohort. As we know, childcare and student parents can, or students that are parents, sometimes the challenges with being a parent can interfere with students being successful. We have some best practices, not only in childcare, but in the resources that we provide to student parents. And I'm happy to, to report that we have been selected to be a part of a cohort of colleges across the country to really study some best practices in how student parents can be successful. So congratulations to them. And also, again, the Liberal Arts Network for Development Award recipients, the Land Awards. This is an award competition that our students in various disciplines perform very well in. Film awards, I'm going to run through these really quickly. For film, we won first and second place. First place for film, Harrowing, that was written and directed by Tracy Leon with Christine Lee, Drew Ritter, Ruben Salgado, Dominic Thompson, and Josh Stayer. Congratulations to them. Second place, The Delivery Man, written and directed by Thomas Connelly and Montrea Morgan, Noah Strombo, Grace Russell, and Eric Stockman. For writing, third place. Independence at the Pond, it's the name of the piece, that was written by Kimberly Rick and sponsored by Michelle Dunham. And lastly, for art and photography, for 3D art, we took second and third place. Moving Parts is the piece, Emily Lewis, mentored by Jenna Andrews. Third place was Gender, that was created by Vance Cypher, also mentored by Jenna Andrews. And honorable mention to Construction, Reconstruction, Deconstruction, created by Evelyn Canoe, also mentored by Jenna. And lastly, in photography, we had second place and an honorable mention. Second place for Wonder Woman, Abby Kosolsky, and mentored by Alyssa Shaver, Alicia Shaver, I'm sorry. And honorable mention, Prehistoric Light by Cooper Grope, also mentored by Alicia Shaver. And that concludes my items, Mr. Chair.
Very much, sir. Very much, sir.
Hello? Okay. Next, we have Robert, AVP Robert Matthews, and he's going to go over four grant programs. And an academy, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and trustees. Excited this evening to share with you a few updates on some new programs and some funding that the college recently received. The very first one is the Barrier Removal and Employment Success Program. This funding is coming to us through the state of Michigan. We were awarded $841,000 to support students in a number of ways. Ideally, of course, to help them find employment, but as we often hear, some of the same things that keep our students from staying in school are also some of the same things that might keep them from finding employment and then keeping employment. So this funding really helps us to address any barriers that a student might run into while they're employed, whether it be transportation, whether it be childcare, housing, work tools, other items that they might need. And if they run into any of those barriers, we're gonna be able to support them in that way. These, this funding will support us or will support students through September 30 of 2025, and we're really excited to be able to have this additional support for our students. The second opportunity, and you have to excuse the long name, but of course, you know, with these programs, sometimes they get really long names. This one is the Michigan Statewide Targeted Apprenticeship Inclusion and Readiness System. And this program will support students who might traditionally not consider apprenticeship as a viable option, to try to encourage them to pursue apprenticeships. Initially, we want to address and support those who have been most severely impacted by the pandemic. And so those are often women, underrepresented persons, individuals with disabilities, English language learners, and then also students who may currently be without high school diploma or GED. And this funding has come to us in the amount of $300,000 for us to support 50 students over the next couple of years. The third one that I want to share with you is the Supplemental Nutrition and Assistance Employment and Training Program. And there's a very unique component of this program through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. It's called the 50-50 Program. We have worked for just over a year now with some technical support from the Michigan Community College Association and the American Association of Community College Trustees in a cohort really looking at how we can implement this program and launch in Michigan with community colleges. I'm proud to announce that Mott Community College is the first, and at this point, the only college in the state of Michigan that has worked through the process to launch this program. We will be launching on April the 1st, and this program will allow us to help individuals gain education and skills that pay good wages and really return value in the labor market. The really critical piece about this is that a little sort of hidden fact, and this is a part of what we've been working through with this technical assistance, is that with this program, we will be allowed to recapture 50% of any non-federal dollars that we spend supporting these students. And so those dollars can then be reimbursed and returned to the, to the students, or to the school to do additional student support activities. And then lastly, the Lastly, the Consumers Summer Youth Academy. This is a program we, we actually launched a couple of years ago, and it took a hiatus for a short time, but it is back. Consumers Energy is awarding us funding this year to run another cohort for six weeks during the summer. We're one of Forsites, Flint, Grand Rapids, Jackson, and Pontiac will be offering this program this summer. And it allows us to expose students to careers in the energy sector. High school students, grades 10 through 12, will be able to participate this year. In addition to that exposure, there will be job readiness mentoring, and then we'll help them complete college applications as well. And the cool thing for the students is that they will receive a stipend for participating. And as I close, I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge, I know they're not here right now, but Autumn Scherzer, Kathleen Lavalier, Marcus Matthews, and Anne Rennie, because they were all very integral in putting in the work to help us secure these opportunities for our students, for the college, and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next, we have AVP Sherry Nowak, and she will be reviewing the board informational presentation with regard to the extension of winter break and also celebrating our new hires.
Seven and nine. Yeah. Hello, Chair and trustees. So tonight's discussion of the extension of winter break, there's no proposal to approve. It's, this is just informational. So for clarity and planning, we're extending winter break to cover December, to include December 24th. So at Mott, the winter break is generally covered through the perpetual calendar, but you'll see it in a second, but not every December 24th is included. Like last year, we had to make some adjustments at the, at the end of the fall semester. So as you'll see, it impacts six of our eight Mott employee groups, exempt workforce, admin support, MNO, Pro-Tech, and S&amp;M. So they have their winter break defined either by their perpetual calendar, or there's some language in their benefit summary that talks about, in addition to the holidays, the college is normally closed for the period of time between Christmas Eve and New Year's Day, and the actual number of days off depends on the calendar for that year. Or it'll say they follow the college's holiday closing schedule on the HR website. It does not impact faculty, because faculty rely on the academic calendar, and it doesn't affect public safety, because they are 24/7 operation, and December 24th is already included in their holiday schedule. So the rationale is that most Michigan community colleges include December 24th as either part of their winter break, or their closure, or their holiday schedule. And as reported by the Society of Human Resource Management, generous paid time off is one of the most valuable benefits to employees, second to health insurance. So basically, for us, it just means that our process will be when December 24th falls on a Saturday or Sunday, we will recognize it on the Friday prior to winter break. The next slide shows the perpetual calendar, if you're not familiar with that definition here. The periods in yellow show the times that winter break is scheduled, but for the first row there, that was 2023, and you can see December 24th fell on a Sunday, so we honored it on the prior Friday. Are there any questions on the extension of winter break?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, no.
Okay. So the next item is our new hires, and we have three to introduce. So the first is Sarah Meyer. She's one of our new HR administrators in the Human Resource Department. She started January 22nd. And Sarah is a Mott graduate. She received her Bachelor's of Business Administration from Northwood University. She was, worked for three years at Owl Services as an HR specialist, and most recently, she was a pre-employment specialist and had an internship at ZF for three years. Next one. Grace Corthals, that should have an S on the end. Her name is plural. She's one of new sworn police officers in public safety. She started February 5th. Grace began an associate's program, Associate's Degree Program in Criminal Justice at Mott. She's a 2023 graduate of the Police Academy at Washtenaw Community College, and she possesses her MCOLs license. And the last new hire to introduce to you is Gina Kraus. She's an Administrative Assistant I in Health and Human Services Division. She started February 5th. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Healthcare Administration from Kaplan University. She spent eight years as an administrative experience, excuse me, she has eight years of administrative experience, including payroll and purchasing. She most recently was an office manager at a gymnastics organization for four years. And that concludes the new hires for this meeting. Are there any questions?
And are there any questions, trustees? No, thank you very much.
And finally, I would like to call up AVP Wayhill to provide an overview of the 2024 legislative and public policy priorities for the college.
It's not, oh, there it is. Got it. So I presented the draft legislative policies last week during the two topical sessions, as well as the committee meeting. Do you want me to go through these in detail this evening, or would you like to just ask questions? We do want your input on these, and that can be sent to Jordan so that we can add whatever your desires are to the list of policies that we're recommending at the state and national level.
Board on this issue.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Sure.
The, what you outlined during the meetings that we went through during the Zoom meetings, are, is the board going to approve those at some time, or is that just what you're telling us what you're gonna go for with the?
So it's a draft, and what we want is the reaction to the draft.
Okay, so there's time to add, or?
Correct, yeah. So when I presented it, I indicated that the first week in March. So March 1st is this Friday. We would love to have your views on what was presented by the end of next week. And that can go through Mr. Kaiser.
Right. And the reason I ask that is Wendy and I have been talking about some stuff that we'd like to bring you guys and maybe ask for your help, and maybe put it on that list so that maybe we can get some money for it.
Okay. I will say that the big picture, the state-level priorities broadly mirror what the State Association of Community Colleges recommending. So a lot of that is, we're running parallel with them, and the federal priorities very much look like our federal association's priorities. So would be happy to hear what you have to offer.
So there's still time to?
There is.
Put a little cheese on the burger there?
Yes. Maybe even some pickles.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
It does. It concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Miscellaneous business, board-generated ideas. Mr. Reyes? Mr. Freeman? Mrs. Couch? Okay. We're waiting to hear this.
Well, we're gonna try to keep it under an hour.
Do you want me to start it?
You go right ahead.
Okay, and then you can interject. Okay. So when trustee Couch had mentioned the thing about the elevator being down, me, having a really bad back, I went over there and we walked it, right? Like both of us, he has a cane, I have a bad back. We wanted to see how bad it was. So anyways, as we were walking around, we had ran into somebody in the dental hygiene clinic. So we asked if we could do a tour. How does it work? Do we have to sign up for it? And this lady was gracious enough to help us, or let us go through. So I took some notes down. Again, these are just board-generated ideas that we want your input. As we walked through the dental hygiene clinic, things that we noticed, they needed more space, definitely. By far more space. Almost all of the equipment in there is so ridiculously old. It is unbelievable. So I had asked about the waiting list. We have such a long waiting list right now for the dental hygiene clinic. We were just, you know, talking maybe down the road, adding like a second shift in, or to get more students through, since the list is so long. And also, we want the dental clinic to come here to give us a presentation of things that they need. And I highly recommend all three of you go there to take the tour. It was just something that we stumbled across while we were in there, and then we had taken notes from there. And so the next thing we want to talk about is?
Well, listen, as far as the dental clinic, I, a friend of mine is a recent graduate from the dental program, and she had mentioned that they could use more room, that they were packed in. Now, and when we went through there, they are packed in pretty tight. You know, and we, we have a proposed solution for that, because when we were in Vegas and we talked with
San Jose College.
San Jose College, thank you. They talked about a medical, like a clinic, medical clinic that they had put in, whereas I don't know if that would fit here for us, but, but I think it'd be nice to have all the wellness
Let me take that part.
Wellness, well, all the wellness programs put in one building. They're spread out in what, four or five different?
Right. So right now, we have the Curtis Mott Building, and there's the Health and Medical Services, the Prowl Building, we have the Counseling, and then the Mott Memorial Building, we have the Dental Program. They are scattered everywhere. We just thought it would be cool, as we went to this class in Vegas, to have everything under one umbrella, essentially, into one building, including the dental hygiene, kind of like a one-stop-shop. So it's less confusing for the students that need services, because they are scattered all across the campus here.
Well, we were, we were thinking the Durham Wellness Build, is that what that's called? Right. And our thoughts on that was to have a architect give us the feasibility of putting the first floor, a ground floor, in there and moving everything into that building.
I think once you walk through the dental hygiene clinic, I actually laid down in one of the chairs, and with it being spread completely out and where my head was, there was not even two feet for them to get through, and then the next person's feet were right there. God forbid if they were like as big as my son, six foot six. I mean, you literally could not get the tray through. You couldn't get anything through. So they're bumper-to-bumper like this, and they have sharp instruments in their hands. So to me, they needed this. And like I said, the equipment is outdated, and I just feel like our students are paying to go to college here. So when they graduate and get into the workforce, they're gonna be like, what the heck? I've never seen this before. They're gonna have to be, you know, trained on everything else because our equipment is so old. Another thing is, I have walked through the Durham Wellness Building three times now. All three times that I've been there, there was just somebody working at the front desk. And to me, it's just not utilizing its full potential. It's crickets in there every single time. So that class kind of, I wanted to go in the class. He didn't want to go in the class, and I kind of dragged him with me. And then it ended up to be amazing. And then we reached out, you know, we already spoke to the people from San Jose there. And so, but I think that would be a cool idea, is to put everything that's scattered throughout the campus in one area, including the dental clinic. So if you guys want to go over there and take a tour one day, I'll go with you, and we can talk about this.
Well, hence the legislative priorities. You know, I think we can do this for, you know, a couple hundred bucks probably, but we're gonna need some money to do it, if at all it's feasible. But we would like to explore the possibility, if it is, what it would cost, and if we can do it. So I guess we're just, we're asking for help there. If you guys are more than welcome to help us, you know, we'd love your input. So.
So are you guys making a motion that you want to do something?
Well, I, I would, go ahead, Wendy. I, I would like to get the engineering feasibility done.
I actually wrote a motion, if you want me to read it.
You go right ahead, sister.
Sorry, always prepared. So the motion, and like, we could tweak this. The motion that I had wrote is, I make a motion to have an architect come in and give us an estimate on the cost to incorporate all of the relocation services, such as the Health and Medical Services, Counseling, and Dental Program into the Durham Wellness Center. And then also, the relocation of the Fitness Center to the Ballenger Field House, if we do this, during like a construction-type thing. And I would like, you know, like the estimate back if we could by April we could, by April meeting?
Sure.
I wrote it down. I can give it to you, Jordan.
Let's let him, well, first, is there a second to this motion?
I second it.
Okay. Let's give him, you guys want to discuss this now?
Wait, do you want Jason to watch?
I don't, I don't want to speak to that. I have to come.
I do want you to speak to it. So you got to understand. You got to understand, by us going to these classes, this is just something that we've seen, we thought it was a great idea, we're excited about it, we're new, we want to put our input in as well. So, and this is why I think that, come on up, come on up, let's talk.
Yes. So, the motion is what concerns me. Well, right, but we're not, we're not at the, at the stage to make a motion. I appreciate the feedback, I'm sure the President appreciates the feedback. The motion to take action is where, as I've discussed in bylaw policy meetings, that when the board looks to take action on administrative decisions without consulting the President, we run in conflict with our accreditation guidelines.
So we're jumping the gun just a little bit?
Yes. With, with the motion. The idea, the, the idea, let me finish, please. The ideas and the feedback that the trustees give, you know, speaking on behalf of my office and me, I always welcome them. A very longtime chancellor from North Carolina told me a long time ago, you want what you want from your board. You want your board's eyes, and you want your board's ears. You always want your board's eyes and ears. What you don't want is your board's hands. You get in trouble with that. And that's why HLC and the Big Six, all of the big accrediting agencies have specific guidelines about that part of the collaboration between the CEO and the board. So you saw the dental clinic, you saw the space considerations, those are all things from a capital outlay standpoint that we haven't even got to yet. But for me, when we begin to make motions, that's where the board is running a risk of putting the college in harm's way.
I'd like to say that I went over too. And my daughter and I walked through there, and I was appalled by it. I mean, like you said, if they laid, if you laid straight down, like that, your, your head, your feet would almost touch the other person's head laying this way. When they suctioned out, and they, and the water would spray out, the saliva, well, I mean, it could get on the person closest to you, or even your students. I was appalled by it.
I understand what you're saying, but I also understand what you're saying, Jason. So I will rescind my motion on that, please.
Mr. Freeman.
So just, I mean, the one thing that Wendy, you do, I mean, you know, I think your report out's really good, and it's like good observational. And I think that the piece that I picked out of it, like when you're talking about it, was actually having the administration come and talk about the facility. Like, kind of like, I don't know yet what's been done, what's in the analysis of, you know, all of the needs of the campus, which ones are emergency, which ones aren't. So basically, what I think is the more actionable thing would be, like to have Dr. Beverly and the staff come and talk about, all right, this is what we're doing, this is what our enrollment is, this is the operational aspect of what we're doing, this is how many students we have in queue, this is what our wish list is, like, all this stuff. I'd love to know, like, all that stuff is like background, because then at that point, you know, we find out whether or not, you know, like, if the, you know, the administration also knows that, hey, if, you know, it's on our wish list, and it's what we'd like to do, and it's in our plan, that it's nice that, you know, they know that we would be really excited about any idea they have relative to that, if it's been identified as a need. So that way, to your point about, you know, appropriate separation, I think that you're well within your rights, your eyes and ears of saying, hey, this is what we saw, this is what we've noticed, what we, you know, what we're concerned about. And so then the hands piece, so we're asking the hand to report back to us about how they're going to address that, and what the steps would be. Because even coming from real estate development, we don't engage the architect first. You know, we like, we figure out a lot of stuff about, like, what is the need first, how do you, you know, like, like when we look at low-income housing, how many people are living in poverty, how many people could we rent to, you know, all this stuff. And then we, we shape all of our opinions based on that initial pre-development assessment. So what we can ask for is, give us your pre-development assessment on the campus of where we're at right now. And fortunately, like you said, we do have money left in our bond that we can obligate for future work as well. And so if this is something that, you know, maybe there's interim things, like if proximity is an issue, we can ask the questions about, how are you dealing with that? You know, if people are really cramped in here, what are you doing? You know, so we ask all those questions, and the things, your observations, I think are spot on, and very appropriate.
I want to refer it to you guys, so then people over there, people look at it, and that's why we're saying it to?
Yeah. I found enough, there is absolutely nothing wrong. That assessment was really good, it was cool, it's like, you know, you're engaged. Now it's up to the administration to say, hey, what's going on? Give us, give us your lay of the day-to-day and how that works. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. And to that point, you know, we certainly want to respond to those needs or observations in a timely way. But I would also say that, you know, the President, the administration, having a list of your priorities, and what it is you're looking for, so we can arc up a plan to work on those priorities for you. So it's not just one-offs and other things of that nature. Also benefits all of us in that regard. So we're working together, which is my point in all of this. So we're working together. Nothing gets done if we don't work together. Nothing. Nothing. And the college suffers. That's it.
Thank you very much. Now, can we all agree that we need to have the administration look into this and report back to us on your proposal, get an idea from them, where they're at, and a timeline? You want to hear back from them the next meeting? Okay. So that's on the agenda for the next meeting. I saw something the other day, since this is board-generated ideas. It's metallurgical death investigative training. And I was informed that there's not many places around the state of Michigan that does this. Chief, could you please come forward, and you might be able to help us with us? Thank you. You look excited to be here. So the ME, the Medical Examiner, had talked about this, and that there are not many colleges. Is this something that we would be able to do here at Mott, and is it something we should ask the administration to look for? Because I don't want to go any further, if this isn't a good idea. We just, this is board-generated ideas. Pass that to her, please.
Okay. Are you referring to a program that Mott can offer to train MEs?
No, not MEs, but that in particular. The Medical Examiners had talked about how there's not much training going on in the state of Michigan for that. And when I've talked to your colleagues, other chiefs throughout the area, they have said they would like to have people trained in that. Is that your perception also, or is it something that's just not worthy of getting involved in?
I would have to read this a little further to see exactly what this is. When I worked in other counties, usually the county would oversee the Medical Examiner's Office, so I guess I don't understand.
Offered by St. Louis University. And as I understand, we're sending officers from throughout our state, out of state for the training. And it looked like something we could have our administration look into. And so that's why I'm asking you, you know, what you know about those positions. Because the MEs are saying, yes, we'd like to have these people trained, it would be very helpful. And I was hoping you could input on this also.
I can definitely look into it and get back with you.
Thank you very much.
Can I have this, or do you?
Please, take it.
Thank you.
Comments from the board. Art? We have to select the next meeting location before we get into that. We have some satellite campuses. And it would be nice if the board took a view of the other locations. Would you guys like to go to La Pier for the next meeting? So, so?
I'd like that.
Michael?
I'd prefer here, just because it's, it's central. And then, it's easy, I mean, when I'm meeting, I had to leave work even early tonight to get here. So this is kind of convenient for a lot of people, because it is central.
Art?
We had a meeting, I don't know when, it just seems like it wasn't that long ago that we met, in La Pier, and then we were scheduled for?
It was expensive to go.
Yeah. I'm of the mind that the majority of the meeting should be here.
Okay, thank you. Wendy?
Either way, it doesn't matter to me.
Jeff?
Well, I, I kind of like the idea of going here or there once in a while. You know, not every meeting, but, you know, we service five counties to that, is that what we figured, Larry? Six. And to have a meeting in one of those other locations where our campuses are, I think I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. Next meeting will take place in La Pier.
Well, we were just, weren't we just in Fenton? We were just at a different location to, I think it was pretty expensive. Like, we had to have AV stuff brought in, and, you know, like? And then we brought in, and the meeting never happened. So I feel like we've already been out. So.
Comments from the board. Art, did you have anything?
So, I don't, did we conclude the conversation, or did we come up with a?
Your microphone's not working.
Did we have an agent sit? I mean, about the next meeting?
I said I was indifferent. It didn't matter to me.
Houston, we have a problem.
They want us out, they turned the mic off.
Yeah, I just had a question. I don't know if we had any resolution to that, like in a joint decision relative, I just feel like we were just at a different location. And I did leave and went to that, and, you know, so, and I just, logistically, I just look at what are the issues relative to moving meetings, public accommodation, and then also AV.
Okay. Comments from the board? Art, did you have a comment? Michael?
Yes. Where are we meeting?
Thank you, Don.
Where are we meeting?
We're meeting in La Pier.
No, no.
Sue, do you have any comment?
Well, no, it's, it's fine with me, because I think that, I think it wouldn't hurt for us, once in a while, to go out to the other, the other colleges, I mean, the other, like La Pier, and it didn't hurt. And we went to Fenton, and those people were quite excited that we came there.
Thank you. Wendy, do you have any comments? Jeff?
Nope.
I have a comment. We had a culinary salute to Mardi Gras. Our students participated up in Frankhamouth at the Zenders Motor Lodge back there. They had well over 500 people. The food was amazing. And next year, maybe more of us can go. But if you didn't get enough to eat there, you could get a bag of food to take with you. And the desserts were amazing. It was wonderful. So that's all my comment. Thank you very much. And the meeting is adjourned at 9:42.